Present, I call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. The board would like to welcome the audience and thank you for attending. Youers may watch TCAP's Board of Education meetings and committee meetings live or on demand at any time at www.tcap.net/bord. Now please rise and join me in the honorable lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we had the review approval portion of the agenda. Is there any?
Yeah, I would like to propose switching the discussion items A, which is Saban renovations with C, the multi-purpose fieldhouse, architectural services, that we can have the most important discussion come sooner than later. I know this is a really packed agenda tonight with a lot of items for discussion that are very deserving of our attention, but I think the Saban one would be something that could be moved down in the agenda and hold the fieldhouse one earlier because I know there's a lot of interest in that particular topic from the public, including some people here in the audience.
I have no preference, so I defer to any other comments on board members. I guess, I don't know how, if it affects any of your presentation, it's probably easy enough to switch.
We had intentionally put it after Central because there were some thoughts that would relate to, but I don't think that it has to be.
That was the only thing, I'm not sure either.
Right, Central High School and Fieldhouse are related, but not Saban renovations. So I'm proposing moving Saban renovations to later.
So both of them on?
Yeah, so it would be Fieldhouse first, then Central, then Saban. Or we could do Central, then Fieldhouse, then Saban.
That's how the slides are, right? That's how the slides are.
Central.
Central, then Fieldhouse, then Saban. Okay, let's do it that way.
Unless any objections from any board members? Okay, if not, we will remove, uh, we will be going, Saban will go to the end and the other two will move up. Okay.
And I would just like to confirm a couple of things that right down the line we said. And I just wanted to make sure a couple of things were covered. One is on elementary and secondary students and parent handbooks. And that won't keep very long. So if we move that to the area.
So I, so that, so just to confirm, we're moving Saban to C. So Central High would become A, multi-purpose would become B, Saban would become C. Looking to remove, uh, from consent, um.
Parent handbooks.
Which one?
Student parent handbooks.
So I think that would be F.
So that would become F.
And under Board policy as item I three, basically to just briefly move the home students 5307 into discussion.
Home students 5307.
And I promise I'll keep them short.
Okay, that is, only requires, any board member can pull any item off of consent. So that goes to, uh, E three and F. Um, any other changes? You keep me on my toes today. Uh, with that, do I have a motion to move, approve as amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
Second, alright. I think we can do it. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. And then moving on to a public comment number one. Assuming there is public comment, the board has set aside this time. And in lieu of addressing, the board shall have one opportunity to speak and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks on related actions affecting the school system. And we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detail of rules and procedures, including a complaint process outlined in Board Policy 2504. Amy?
Kevin Main.
Thank you. Ladies and members of the board, my name is Kevin Main. I'm here tonight both as a resident of Traverse City and president of Traverse City Youth Lacrosse Club. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you briefly and take a moment to introduce both our organization and myself and as well as the sport of lacrosse. Our club, we formed it last year to buy the one C nonprofit. We have clear purpose and that purpose is to provide and use in our community with opportunities to participate and organize lacrosse. And all the physical, social and emotional development that comes along with that in a safe and inclusive environment. Lacrosse, for those of you that don't know, it's known as the creator's game. It has deep roots in the indigenous North American cultures. It was originally played to unify communities that went between settlement and settlement. Is used to develop leadership and honor the creator. And those values of teamwork, discipline, respect and resilience are still at the heart of the game today. And those are the things that we as a club are trying to instill in our participants. Uh, it's more than a sport, it's really a tradition that helps shape strong, well-rounded individuals. And every aspect of our program has this built into it. So we're here tonight to voice our strong support for moving ahead with the construction of an indoor fieldhouse. It would really be transformative for our club and for the greater, broader sports community. Would help us deliver on our mission to improve the quality of lacrosse in our area and most importantly, to open the sport to many more local families. We're deeply committed to growing the sport at the grassroots level. And just this past year, since we've been operating as an organization, we partnered with the YMCA to develop and help run and staff an instructional program to introduce, we're providing equipment for the children to use to learn it before they decide if they want to purchase it. We recognize that some of it can get expensive and want to, as part of our mission, be inclusive and supply that for those to really make a decision if it's worth it for them. Most of them come back, so I think we're doing a good job. We've also been out to the elementary schools, the PE classes. I've been to a couple of the middle schools to run programs there, introduce the sport, brought all the equipment, given the opportunities to play. We run a travel program. We have weekly practices and tournaments throughout the spring, summer and fall. And we're grateful for both TCAP's and LEAP for helping us secure fields to be able to run those programs. But as you know, outdoor practice in early spring, late fall can be difficult, challenging, and just not possible in the wintertime. Right now, we're.
Thank you, Mr. Main, I'm sorry, your time is up. It's a three-minute limit.
Alright, well, in short, it would be a game changer for us and the community. Thank you.
Scott Richards?
Scott Richards, Green Lake Township. I'm here to call attention to these books, red, white and royal blue, gender queer, all boys aren't blue. These books don't need, don't need to be in the libraries in our public schools. They don't need to be purchased with public funds because they're trash, just trash. If anybody would like to take a look at copies of the copies that I have of these books, they're right here. I'd also like people in this room to look up the story of Jordan DeMay of Marquette, Michigan. Jordan DeMay, sad story. Could have been me if it wasn't for the grace of God. In the grace of God, go I. These books are trash. You're gonna bring a whole bunch of pain to a whole bunch of people by letting them look at these books. If they want to look at these books, they can go to adult bookstore when they're over eighteen. This book is God's holy word. It was the first textbook in the colonies of America. Was in America right now. Well, I think it was, it was a colonies of America, but the colonies. This was his first textbook. I think if we got back to this textbook, it would be great for our kids. And I'm glad I started learning to read this book and memorizing it. It's been the best thing to get me through life. Matter of fact, if I don't read this book before I walk out the door, I have a bad day. And I know better. In this book, in Matthew eighteen six, I should, I do have memorized, but I'm not going to because I want to get it right. Whatever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck and we have drowned and would have drowned in the depths of the sea. That's Matthew fifteen sixteen. There's many other verses in this book that would help kids, especially Psalms one thirty-nine fourteen. You are fearfully and wonderfully made. Now, if you teach these kids wonderfully made, they don't need to look at these books. And I'm sure they need a lot of help because I'm sure a lot of parents go through divorces. It kind of goes through generations. And divorce is really hard, really hard for kids. And their minds are developing. And I would not want to screw with a person's mind because I'm gonna see my grandparent someday and I'm gonna get a big fat hug from them. I'm glad to be here. And I wouldn't want to be in shoes that let our little one sin because sin is pain. Trust me.
Phil Wiesner?
Phil Wiesner, Traverse City. And going along with what Scott just said about the books and graphic content, and it's like not suitable for the kids in the sex education curriculum, that's exactly what you've noted. In the Sex and the Law section, it's got four slides on pornography and impacts of porn. Porn gives rise to sexual misconduct, leads to violent sex, encourages strangulation, puts girls at risk of being victimized. Porn teaches that hurting women is pleasurable, plus two other slides full of similar information. And find out which pornographic books are in your libraries. You can search the schools and this little picture here of the brain in the cage, that's what's happening. It's, uh, early exposure rewires the brain, leading to increased risk of addiction, distorted views of relationship, long-term mental health struggles. And here's a great place to start, to agree with your slides, right here. Each one of your schools, if you go to the site takebacktheschools.com, you will find TC Central has a hundred and nineteen of these books promoting pornography, which has got all these harms that you admit in your slides, but we're continuing with these books. TC West has a hundred and six and four of the elementary schools have these books. And I'll carry that over to the entire, sorry. Okay, the entire program. The Kinsey sex ed curriculum here, this handout's got ten pages. They're color-coded, there's a first section in yellow and it's from Audrey Werner's site. And she's kind of taken over on the Kinsey study. She knows more about Alfred Kinsey and the fraud from Judith Reisman, she died recently. Audrey's taking over, knows this stuff. And there's a, the first article is highlighted, "The History of Sex Education As Presented To The Texas Board Of Education." So read that and you'll see where this all came from. The second page is wonderful information comparing sexual risk reduction, which is at TCAP's Sexual Risk Avoidance and Biblical Purity. And, uh, and then the middle section, those six pages, read those for sure. I'll speak more at the other open mic, open time. Thank you.
Jessica Sullivan?
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Sullivan of the Northern Michigan Home Field Alliance, also the president of Lagato Family Office, mother of four and nineteen-year resident of Traverse City. I also have a background in serving on a variety of nonprofit boards as well as a school chair of the Montessori Children's House Independent School Board. The Northern Michigan Home Field Alliance is an organization that I was privileged to go ahead and start in two years ago. And as you know, I've been involved and came and visited all of you a couple of years ago and have been working with the Northern Michigan Traverse Indoor Sports Coalition. The fieldhouse that's on the agenda today is something that we've been talking about now for some time with this organization and is something that has been talked about in this district for ten-plus years. I am a product of extracurriculars and opportunities and I myself come from very humble beginnings and can be an advocate for those who, when you have a good mentor and a good coach, what is possible, really truly is, there are no boundaries to it. I want to talk also about, to all of you, you obviously all have information that's in front of you, the importance of governance. And while I understand there are a lot of uncertainties that are still out there within the district, I do believe that we have a unique opportunity now. We've had the conversations throughout the community multiple times. And I believe through the various key stakeholders we've been speaking with, there is a lot of support within our community for us to be able to take advantage of the capital resources as well as the private support while we have it now. I appreciate all of your careful consideration on this and your passion for the young children is something that we mutually agree upon. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Okay, thanks. That's the end of public comment. Moving on to superintendent's report, going to Dr. Ramon Lightner for legislative and district highlights.
Okay, state legislature, not really much of an update. Federally, some lots of unknowns still right now with the passing of the Reconciliation Act at the federal level. Few things that are out there. One is on UJEN and I just, I just, we just recently had an update. Real worried that the funding for Safe Road to Schools that is passed down to the Michigan Fitness Foundation, that is a part of the SNAP Ed Farm Bill is my understanding. So we got a letter that I passed on to the board that that funding has been cut in the Reconciliation Act. So I think that that definitely puts a hold, at very least, into any conversations about what funding may be available with that. So that's one. The other piece that we're, the Medicaid cuts, you know, we, we see a lot from our ISD gets a lot of the funding with that and how that may trickle down. We still don't know yet. It's kind of a, until we get more of the, the rules and the regulations from the federal government, what that looks like, we don't know. And then still a lot in the, up in the air about our federal title dollars. You know, what we're hearing is that, you know, within the bill and within the executive authority that we may see some changes in what are called block grants to the state. Title one, at this point, we're hearing from our public school advocates in Lansing is essentially flat to year-to-date. Title two, which we depend a lot for professional development from the federal government, is zeroed out, cut completely. Most of the other title programs are as well, which includes McKinney-Vento, is completely cut out of the budget. But, you know, what, what can still be done, what, what is there, what does the executive do with that? What does the state try and step in and supplement? We just don't know yet, all of that. So a lot of unknowns from the federal level of what all that means. I think, you know, that the title, for instance, the title two, that really doesn't affect, we by state law have to provide our five days of professional development that we do. But many of the supplemental type things we do are, we may send somebody to a conference or bring somebody in to work, like that's where Jesse works with the state is in charge of what's called our consolidated application. And that has been approved and it's all in there from the state, ready to go. They essentially are the arm of the federal government. The state, Department of Ed, does that work. But we've had zero guidance from our, our federal and state program advisors at MDM, what that looks like. So a lot of unknowns, keeping our eye on it, talking daily with a lot of our legislative advocates in DC. And once we have any kind of more solid, if all those things are a reality or not, or changes, we'll be sure to let the board know. Any questions on that?
Any more comments on the state and the foundation amounts?
No, you know, I think that, you know, what ended up resolved of that is that, you know, from an education standpoint, my understanding of what I hear more rumors, but I get pretty solid ones is they were not that far apart on the school part. It's the part of roads and the deal on roads. So they had a deal, the governor and the, and the House of Representatives, the speaker, were pretty, pretty lockstep in their thoughts. The Senate felt like there was issues with not doing the whole budget at the same time and just trying to do the school aid budget by itself, that what did that mean of what they may try and take out of school aid to be able to, you know, pay for universities to then pay for roads, like the shell game? And so the Senate was pretty well dead against doing just the, the school aid budget by itself. And that's what broke down in the end. They're like, you know, I, I think that there's a lot of similarities and thoughts. The House actually passed a version on just July second, I believe, that did include more of the categoricals back in. It included transportation, it included at-risk, it didn't have an increase in at-risk. But it put a lot of the categoricals back, isolated districts, the one that we get about a million dollars from. So the House showed kind of a little bit what was on their plate of their mindset. And it really wasn't all that different than the House or than the Senate other than it did have quite a bit more money for charter and private schools. I think that's gonna be, was probably a negotiation component there, what's legal even. But that's where it kind of was dropped on July second and there's been no comments or progress signs.
Were they not gonna shift some more extra money into the universities?
Well, that's, that, that is a part of what's there, but you didn't see, you know, what that would go to. There was some retirement there too that they didn't cover in that. So, you know, it, that's, it, it's what you didn't see that I think was what the Senate was, didn't want to leave up for interpretation or later debate. I think they want to, they want to negotiate the whole pie. And that's just where it landed.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to comment, but correct me if I'm wrong. Last year, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, was the first year Michigan decided we're gonna pick up the tab for free and reduced lunches for all.
I think this is the second year.
But was it the second year?
I think this is the second, yeah.
And, and so we, the state would get reimbursed partially for those who qualified at the federal level. Now Michigan could be carrying that entire cost unless the legislature decides to do something different.
And what's interesting in the House version is they put a pot of money in there and gave districts the choice to do it or not. Which has some real implications and some real issues there, I think, that the Senate wasn't comfortable with. So I think there's a level of support, it's just a matter of the state wants to mandate that be done or districts, you know, and, and what I think the danger of that is, is that some districts may choose not to do it and, and do other things and it's on the back of maybe children. And so I think that that's the debate that happened there. And the Senate is pretty steadfast that they want it one hundred percent fully, breakfast and lunch for universal like we've had the last two years. So we'll continue to advocate, talking. So we'll continue to advocate, talking, still talking in Texan with John Roth and John Demus and Betsy Copia and keeping up to date as, as we go each week. If there's any, anything else, I'll be sure to update the board. Okay, and then district highlights, still some things going on this summer. TCAP hosted two successful LEGO Robotics Summer Camp sessions in June for students entering third through fifth grades. The camp was held at Central High's Innovation and Manufacturing Center and was led by TCAP's teachers. The camp was conducted in collaboration with LEGO Education, which connects STEAM learning to real-world experiences in a fun, hands-on way. Students develop valuable skills such as critical thinking, collaboration, engineering, and communication. The students worked in pairs with one LEGO Robotics kit per pair and had over sixty builds to choose from. Want to thank the folks at Newton's Road that are doing some more fundraising for us to try and get more LEGO kits for us to be able to use with our kids in the future. Bill Myers and, and, and the team are, I know right now, I left email I had, they've raised $16,000 and are trying to get to 30, so appreciate that. And that's something we want to be able to do all over the district, so really excited about that. In June, Throwby Field was host to an Emergency Action Plan Training. The crucial event provides an invaluable opportunity for athletic trainers throughout the Munson-Murray Free Bunch System, including those at TCAP, to collaborate and enhance our collective ability to respond effectively to athletic emergencies. And during the first two weeks of service, the TCAP Sunshine Bus distributed 314 food bags supplied by the Father Friend Foundation and 358 hygiene bags supplied by the Student Support Network. The Sunshine Bus provides access to free food and basic needs to all children and is available in eight different locations three days a week. The Sunshine Bus runs through August 29th. A complete list of days and times and locations can be found on the TCAP's website. And we also have the Sunshine Bus in both the Community Parade and the Cherry Festival Full Parade. I had the chance to walk with it one day, I kind of threw my back out before the other and wasn't able to walk. But, uh, but just awesome and the response of kids get, I'm amazed at when the bus driver's driving, how many kids are just screaming, "That's my bus driver!" You know, as you go along, it just, you know, they're literally rock stars, the bus drivers and bus aid. And just so cool to be able to do that and appreciate all of our team, Ginger and, and Katie and, and all of the, the team, a part of our, our philanthropy work and our SSN work. Awesome job, fun thing to do and to be able to show that important work that our district does. So that's what I have for district highlights. And then last thing I have is to go to Connie and forward some tenure updates.
Yeah, so at the conclusion of this past school year, the 24-25 school year, we had numerous staff members who had completed the state requirements to acquire tenure in the state of Michigan. And we'd like to acknowledge them here tonight. We have Amy Foulis, Lisa Fleese, Emily Hellman, Miranda Kelly, Anne Marie Weber, Kathleen Barber, Alice Bow, Benjamin Boyce, Karen Chambers, Alicia Key, Catherine Coats, Kelly Obrinovic, Sarah Roche, Nikki Vandercook Ryan. So congratulations to all of them on their accomplishment.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to board committee reports. Board Committee reporting out by Trustee Valner.
Okay, so we met on Tuesday, July 8th. We first approved our meeting minutes from the prior meeting with one minor change. We added, we approved, put on the consent calendar the virtual courses for middle schools, middle school students through Excelus. We also put on the consent calendar the field trip request for Germany in 2026. There have been no changes to the dates or the costs or the general itinerary, but the location of the program has been changed from Konaq in the past to Stuttgart. Fourth, we reviewed the elementary and secondary student parent handbooks. And Beth Peck, I'm going to call you eagle eyes from now on, caught a few errors in the handbooks that have been rectified. And that was also put on consent, but now cold, so we'll be reviewing that later in brief. We then had our presentation from Dan McGee on the changes or additions to the sex ed curriculum for the next year, based on that advisory board, so he will be detailing that presentation later. And then we had really probably the, the most important aspects of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee's meeting, which was for Jesse Houghton and Dan Tiesworth to present the end of, the latest spring NWEA and PSAT and SAT score results for the spring. So they went over junior kindergarten through seventh grade, NWEA, math and reading, PSAT eighth through 11th grades, and also the advanced placement results, ninth through 12th grade, with Mr. Joe Esper and Ben Berger from the two primary high school. Basically, I'd love to talk more in depth about curriculum results, but I'll just say at a very high level, most of the performance metrics that they presented over the last five years were flat. So they were, we were looking at data from 2021 through 2025. We're talking 50, 55, or 60% proficiency. Those, they might have fluctuated a little bit, but overall, if you look at 2021 to 2025, they were pretty flat. The one bright spot that was an exception was NWEA third through fifth grade math, where we had a growth from 45 to 52% proficiency. Then conversely, the biggest opportunity for growth is eighth grade math now. So the PSAT eighth grade scores did go down 12 percentage points over five years. We didn't see the NWEA eighth grade scores, but in any event, they will be bringing all of these data points to the academic achievement portion of our strategic plan discussion in early August for that study session. The advanced placement courses, I can just say, we've had another record year, I think, in terms of growth of number of students taking exams. It was over 900 students at our two primary high schools who took nearly 1,800 exams, so averaged almost two per kid, but we had some crazy rock stars who took as many as five APs. And their results were statistically big, greater than the global average. It's not just a national average, it's actually a global average. So moving on, we had a fairly brief discussion about our strategic plan that we planned to have a study session on in early August and finalized late August. Mr. Tiesworth and Ms. Houghton shared the template that they proposed using to populate the objectives and the performance measures that support all of the strategic goals. So we talked about they're bringing the achievement data into that discussion, the five years trend data that we just talked about. And then based on input from other trustees for that discussion, trustee Peck brought up the idea of a performance measure on special education students. Among other things, trustee Schmidt also raised post-secondary performance measures. And I raised the issue of chronic absenteeism. So lastly, we did our usual celebrations and successes. There was a principal's joint meeting at the end of the school year, the LEGO Robotics Summer Camp that Dr. Van Wagener just referenced, and then three international trips that have already returned. One was to Italy, one was to Greece, one was to Mexico. And with that, we adjourned. Next meeting will be Tuesday, July 29th at 8:30 AM. Come one, come all.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on curriculum?
I just have a quick comment. I thought it was another fantastic meeting and I appreciate Dan and Jesse bringing forth solutions around, like, like eighth grade math, right, was borderline jaw-dropping. So like the fact that we're talking about solutions around tier-two support in our middle schools, which currently don't exist for math, or consistency across our elementary schools with tier-two support for math, I think that's, that's awesome. And I just wanted, just one point of caution that got brought up again, a curriculum that, closing our opportunity gap is not a zero-sum game and it's a false narrative. And we know it's a false narrative because of what happened at Cortade 10 years ago. And for Sarah and Scott who weren't there in February, Cortade was able to not only close their gap, but raise outcomes for all students. It was the first and last time this, any of our schools has been recognized nationally, our Title I schools. So I just caution against using the zero-sum to take away from one group to, to benefit another group, where we know that with certain strategies, that all kids can survive.
But we don't know if it's continuous. I don't think it was continuous into the upper grades.
Continuous, what do you mean?
You mean, you could close the gap with one group of kids, they move to the next grade, and you don't see that phenomenon continue.
Well, whatever happened at Cortade, and I, and I, you know, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what happened, but something different.
I'll give you guys a few, a few seconds to go back and forth, but then I'm going to be, no, no, you're fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think something, something different happened and then we got a different outcome. And I guess I would just caution us against using the zero-sum game narrative because we're not taking away from one group so another group can benefit.
I, I will ask, that sounds like a rabbit hole to go down.
Yes, sir.
So any other questions on curriculum?
Not at all.
All right. Then moving on to Finance Committee, reporting out by Trustee Ari.
Well, we met July 10th at 8:15, right here in this very hot room. A number of the topics of discussion are going to be moved down to the regular agenda, so I'm not going to talk in detail about Central High School, nor the multi-purpose fieldhouse. A number of the other projects, well, except Saban seems to be now off the consent agenda, so.
Saban's on discussion.
Right, and it was, right.
Yeah.
So we had good discussion. I mean, I, I think the fieldhouse and central gym were the primary focus of what we talked about. And we did make a recommendation that the Central High School discussion move on. It seems fairly clear from the Finance Committee discussion that option three was probably the most attractive and the most reasonable. We also, not unanimously, decided to move the discussion of the fieldhouse and the architectural engineering drawings on to this board meeting so that we can make a recommendation, at least from us, two to one, to go ahead and approve those designs and move that process forward. We also approved trucks and some other things that are still on the consent agenda and had a discussion of the Student Support Network. And we had a brief discussion on some of the capital projects that are out there and we have ongoing discussions regarding those. Nothing monumental that I think came to light during the finance meeting. And we adjourned and our next meeting is Thursday, July 31st.
I'll just take one quick second as, as I try to whenever it's mentioned, but Student Support Network on the fundraising increase mentioned at the Finance Committee was awesome to see and I, I think we do a lot more, but from where we were.
We're making serious progress and we appreciate the leadership on the Student Support Network.
Hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Hundred and twenty-four, that from 39 or something, so.
And, and Beth brought up an executive, like why the change from now staff committees reporting out through committees. So John did give us a, a staff committee report from sustainability to.
Yeah, no, it was, it's just something we can plug anytime we can because I think the more people that hear about it, the, the more we can fundraise. And I think that regardless of any, just any other discussion we have, we're all on board on that growing social SSN.
Just another shout-out that 1,525 students were served through the SSN last, last year. So I thought, yeah, Katie's doing great work, so.
Yes, thank you, Katie. Like I've also seen her family, literally, she makes her family work very hard to do all sorts of things. So I appreciate her family too. I, any other questions on finance? Executive, I'll keep quickly. This meeting was myself and Erica with trustee Peck in rotation. Pretty, everything is going to be covered later, except for a couple of things. We moved some board policies, we had some discussions on that. Some of them went on consent, some of them have been on discussion. HR, I feel like was probably a more upbeat report than many we've had over the past several years that we are largely staffed. Obviously, still have a couple of needs, especially bus drivers, that we are looking for. But, but generally speaking, our staffing was, was way better than it typically has been. I mean, it was a very quick meeting and the next meeting is Thursday, I corrected this right, Thursday, July 31st, Thursday, July 31st at 4:00 PM. Please note in the meeting, I did say, I believe, Thursday, July 29th at 4:00 PM. That is, that day does not exist. It is Thursday, July 31st at 4:00 PM.
I think the date exists, it's just not for me.
The date exists.
No, not on Thursday, yeah. The date exists, yes.
Who was the rotational board member at that meeting?
The next one? Um, I do not actually.
The next board meeting is, I believe it's you, Scott.
Really?
There you go.
There you go.
Go ahead and ask.
Um, our board office hours, I'm sure a very long report out needed by trustee Valner.
Yeah, so I actually had one teacher come to office hours in person at the Terrence Area District Library. She is Lisa Gerva, she is a Long Lake Elementary School teacher. And she talked about how she has successfully managed, through her years of experience, managing challenging behaviors with young students. And in particular, this last year, she also shadowed Principal Kate Berwinkle and really just holds Kate in high esteem for the additional support that, you know, Kate steadfastly gives kids who have some challenging behaviors, like I said. And really, I, I just said, okay, so what exactly are your techniques? And she said, communication with the parents is so key, just ongoing communication, even inviting them into the classroom so that the parents can witness firsthand what is going on. And then for, for Kate, her part is just endless, almost endless patience, probably endless patience. So just sticking with kids and just that perseverance really, she's just seen a lot of success there. So I thought that was a happy story to share with you all. And if I hadn't had anybody show up, there was a puppet show going on in the adjacent Maguire Room at Tattle. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. You might have alternative entertainment if, if you don't have someone come to your office hours in the future.
There you go. Next board office hours is virtual, trustee Schmidt in attendance, July 24th, 2025. And the link is posted on the board page as well as I believe on the calendar as well. Okay, moving on to consent. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as amended?
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended. For a second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to a public hearing for sex education. As president of the board, I declare this public hearing open to the public. The additions and revisions of the sex education curriculum will be the subject of this hearing. Deferring to Dr. Wagners.
Okay, so the Curriculum Committee had the chance to see the updates with us. With us, we have Dan McGee. Dan is a teacher at Central High School, as well as our sex education coordinator. Dan, for years, has done a great job with organizing this work. And he has a brief presentation to give you just of the updates to the curriculum. Again, those are always available online. We do have some videos that have some copyright, but we've made that available to the public and available to board members to be able to schedule here in the office at any time. We have the ability to do that. So I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Dan to go through his presentation, which is essentially the same as what the Curriculum Committee had saw, but just to make sure it's available to the public and our full board. Go ahead, Dan.
I gotta click back here.
Yeah, I was going to say, aim in that corner back there.
Try and see what happens. Uh-oh, technical difficulty. No?
There you go, there you go.
Any questions?
Yeah. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going, way back.
Okay, that's goodbye. So we had the board curriculum meeting and the presentation. Tonight we'll present and then I'll be back in August where you can, you can approve or not approve our recommendations. So our sex ed advisory board is made up of a number of parents, community members, which include a minister, many medical people, there's, there are some educators involved as well. Extensive, extensive amount of work put under this. So we have a number of updates that we will present. And like, like, like Dr. Van Wagener said, there is a, there are a few videos that are copyrighted, protected, so they have password-protected, so someone would have to, if they want to see that, they could make arrangements to come watch them here. Our parents, uh, cause we have an opt out program, these being approved, they would have the option to come in into a school and being able to see the materials that way. And that's been going on for, I've been around a long time, so forever. Um, so we had a, we had a number of things, uh, in the fifth grade. Well, changes happen in a variety of ways. And in fifth grade, uh, I I reached out to fifth grade teachers that have been teaching HIV and the puberty end is, you know, asking for, hey, what's your, what's your ideas, any updates, any needs? And I heard from a number of teachers that went to a professional development, um, provided by our ISD. And it's the Michigan model, and they had a new video and they go, that video is far superior to what we're showing kids. And so we enacted on the recommendation from those teachers. We reviewed it, we reviewed a a number of supplement, uh, materials for the teachers, uh, to be able to use with their classes. And that is what is the fifth grade, uh, proposed changes. Uh, legally, we have to teach HIV in each building, so that's something we wanna make sure we are, we are on top of. And everything has to be medically adequate, uh, accurate. So that was another reason for, uh, the updates. So we have a propose for our fifth grade. Um, we had discussion on with the, uh, sex ed advisory committee about the HIV video at the, at the, uh, the middle school level. Uh, it's currently taught in eighth grade. We're not proposing at this time for it to go to seventh grade. But we think this is a, this video is and materials are seventh grade appropriate. So if we were to propose a grade change, it would already be approved material. So usually when we approve material, it is a grade and above. So we're asking for this to be approved for seventh grade. Again, this came from Michigan model. Um, I sent this out to, to the middle school staff, asked for requests, uh, for, for feedback. The feedback I got was, hey, it's password protected. So we took care of that issue for them and I received no other feedback on the HIV. Um, I think, I think it's very good factual information, uh, and current. So, uh, one big change in HIV in the last five to ten years has been the treatment and medication and whatnot. So that is our middle school changes.
So Dan, let me just ask, um, would kids get it then at HIV education twice in seventh grade and eighth grade?
No, and currently it's only taught, it would be taught in eighth grade. What we're saying is, let's say I came back next year with a proposal to move HIV to seventh grade. That, that I would, I would ask for that approval to have it moved. But the, the materials you've already witnessed, and you can see the materials again next year, we just.
I think Joseph's point was, uh, it was also on the fifth grade slide. And was that a different video is like a question, if you go back to slides.
Sorry. Yeah, that's a different video, the fifth grade, and the fifth grade is currently taught in fifth grade.
And you mentioned, um, Michigan model, but that's Michigan model for health.
It's a health education curriculum, the, the state of Michigan and, uh, yeah, so. So that was our seventh grade. Now, at the high school, we had a, a few more. Um, last year, I, I, um, we did our evaluation last year and we presented that every other year. So next year, my final year, I will be back giving you, uh, the evaluation, uh, that we go through next year. One of our evaluation things that we came up with was a number of things we thought we needed to address. Uh, one of those was, we didn't have a quiz at the high school level. And we thought a quiz would give us a very good understand, better understanding of what kids are, are actually learning. So we developed a quiz. Uh, that was a long process. Uh, each, each possible answer, every question was thoroughly gone through by the committee. And I think, uh, we ended up with thirty nine questions on that quiz. I think at one time it was at forty five and we just, these two are the same, let's eliminate that one and whatnot. I'm sorry, Scott.
Post test, not a pre test, this is not.
Uh, this is a post test. I mean, we could give it as pre test, post test, but is, it is a post test. Another thing we do get from, uh, child feed, uh, feedback at both the middle school and high school is last year we approved a questionnaire. And those kids can, uh, it's very short, something they learned, something, is there something they, they thought they would learn that we didn't learn? Or if they had any additional questions? Um, that was approved last year. So we, we do that, I send that out and I get the, the teacher gets the results of that. So it can impact their teaching if, if necessary, but I get the results of those, uh, questionnaires as well. Yeah. Um, we had a few tweaks, uh, to, uh, uh, some of the slides. So our teen, teen pregnancy safe delivery act, um, our safe delivery program. The first question that we had in our, on our, uh, uh, teen pregnancy was about, are you ready to be a parent and had a few questions, like, will you have the time, will you have the money, will you, and those things? We had board members that said, hey, we need to address these, those questions. And I go, well, the, the teacher does, and they, they wanted it in the slide, so we added those into the slide. I don't know if we wanna quickly look at some of those tonight or not. Um, you all, you all have access to them. One thing I did do, you'll know, anything that was changed, cause these were existing slides, any modifications that were added, they have a gold star in the corner of that slide. Um, we, again, we, uh, we had some changes to HIV. We made sure we had the correct medical, um, documentation and statistics, um, that were more current. And then we added two short videos. Uh, one of the videos we used in the past was no longer accessible to us, so that kind of forced the issue. But, uh, we, we are, we thought both of these were better than what we've had before and they worked together. Uh, there's a few changes to STIs. Uh, again, that is, um, those were more like statistics. Uh, the proposed sex in the law, that one had a little bit more and under, under, uh, sexual abuse. So the last, I would say, four years, the effects or the impact of pornography on our, on our kids or on any people. And that has been a topic of discussion on the board, on our sex ed advisory board. And we, we've been searching for, uh, a way that we can present so kids can actually understand, um, the impacts of watching pornography. What does it do to your mind, what, what kind of things are happening? It's an educational thing at the high school level. And that's, we thought was appropriate. Um, Aaron's Law, uh, Aaron was a, as a young child, was abused twice. Once by her, uh, her friend's uncle, when she was doing a sleepover, and later by her cousin. She later discovered from when her little sister made a co- uh, comment about her cousin that he was abusing her as well. And they had parental support, they voiced, they got support. And that she's been a, she's basically given up her career to be an advocate for these, for this law to go across, uh, the country about having a voice and that action. Uh, the last one that was a big, uh, under sexual abuse was the human trafficking. And we all understand that that's a, that's a big thing. We want kids to be able to recognize signs and symptoms of, of the situations that, that, that can occur. And so we're, we're trying to further educate kids to create us, you know, a better life and a safer place for them. I believe that's it.
Sorry, Dan, on that last note, so the human trafficking, is that new this year or just amplified?
This would be new.
Yeah, I just wanna give props for that. Um, at the, at Central High School, at the end of the year, a number of us have volunteered with the ELA project. And I've had kids, seniors, present projects on that very topic. And we're advocating that all kids be educated on it, and there was a story a couple of years ago on local kids. So really appreciate your, your adding that to the curriculum, it's really important.
Because I teach at Central High and those senior projects, I often get interviewed by kids for a variety of things. Sometimes something to do with sex ed, something to do with, um, nutrition or fitness. I do a lot of those to help them with their project. Cause they, they do interview people and, and gather information and whatnot. So this makes a real good resource for them. But again, uh, I have an amazing committee that painstakingly put a lot of time and energy in. I think we had eight meetings this year, which is the most we've ever had. But it was because there was just more, we, we already, we already have things on our list that we wanna look at next year, so.
I hope you have a succession plan.
For whoever takes me over, that's, that's.
Thank you for your ears.
I have just a few questions. In fifth grade, about how much time do you actually spend on HIV?
The fifth grade, between puberty and HIV is, I'm guessing it's at least a couple hours, if not longer. And it's caught, it's taught over a series of days, it's not like one big two hour thing. They, they teach part, day one here, day two, day three, it's, it's organized in that fashion.
Cause the thing that I found lacking in fifth grade was, um, I, I didn't see where any of the other sexually transmitted diseases were covered. Were they covered in there too?
I, I don't believe we do that in the fifth grade.
Cause I think some of those, um, may show up in even larger numbers. And HIV tends to show up more in males because of behaviors.
Oh, yeah, yeah, statistically, there's a slide in the, that we added in the high school one that particularly, uh, talks about what we talked about board curriculum meeting, yeah.
And then, uh, you know, but, but girls should understand about chlamydia, angina, rhea, things like that, uh, hep B, hep C.
We do that at the middle school and the high school level. Um, we can, we can look at it, uh, at the elementary level, for sure. I can take that back to the committee next year.
You know, it's not just HIV.
Oh, yes, but HIV is the one that, HIV is the one that the law says we have to teach at each bill. So that's why, that's why it's taught at the fifth grade level, that's why it's taught in the middle school and that's why it's taught at high school.
And in eighth grade, to really stress, it's a high risk behavior that is so important in whether you do or don't transmit the disease. Um, it says in there, you know, that if you keep your CD four count very low, your infection rate, that it can't be transmitted. But to do that, the cost of that, the drugs run eighteen hundred to forty two hundred dollars a month. And there are avenues that help, you know, lion white, that kind of thing. But they're talking a half a million over a lifetime. And trust me, when you have a disease like that, it rules your life. So it is not a benign thing.
No, I.
I mean, you don't, you just don't.
We don't present it as it is, we just, we talk about the medical advancement that it is. Because like we talked at the board curriculum about Magic Johnson, and Magic Johnson was detected, it was a death sentence.
Right.
And the fact that he's still with us today, part of it was he was a world class athlete. Uh, part of it was very early detection.
Right.
Was key with him. So testing for, for all, all STIs is a huge, huge thing.
So, so the best point, I think, you know, the committee might next year think about just i- identifying that there are extreme costs for those, you know, while the advances have. It's, it's not cheap.
Yeah, just don't, just don't. And so, um, I was going to the state website. And in your slide number three, the data says, a- as of twenty two, that seventy one percent of all new cases were in males, seventy one percent of the cases, you know. And I, I think that's important. Um.
That was in the high school's slide.
Yeah.
Uh, and we don't have the percentage, I don't believe, in the high school side. We just, I think we just make it, make mention that it is.
It almost sounds like it's an even distribution thing and it is, it's not, it's a behavior.
Yep.
It's the behavior thing.
So if you, if you'd like, I can present that next year to the, to the committee.
Just as a suggestion.
That statistic to make that more prevalent.
And in slide number three, um, the middle thing, when they're talking about prevention, they say fewer partners, monogamous relationships are actually probably, would be preferred. It, on, on slide twenty.
Okay.
If that helps, um, fewer partners, uh, is gonna leave you in the dust. Um, and then, um, in slide twenty three, um, abstinence is not the only way to prevent HIV because it crosses the placenta.
It, that is covered in HIV, that there are three, any, only, any bodily fluids.
But, but the, the slide.
But abstinence is a, is an important part.
The slide says, abstinence is a hundred percent the only way, that's what the slide says.
No, well, it, okay.
What's, what slide are we, what, what are we talking about here? Which one?
Which slide in the high school?
Which one, no.
Uh.
So I would have, we could go to the presentation.
These are the changes.
Yeah.
I think she's.
Oh, I see, okay.
So it's just, it's just minor things like that. The last question I had was, do you guys, um, mention Thrive as a provider for teen pregnancy?
We mentioned.
Thrive, the Thrive Clinic?
I don't believe that's in our resources at this time.
I was just kind of wondering if there was any possibility of including Thrive. I don't believe they do STD testing, but they do do pregnancy care. And I think that they do everything to work out what it comes to be.
Okay, um, I can, like I said, like with other things, we can, we can, uh, bring that to the committee next year to look at. If the, and then the committee, that may have been suggested in the past, I, I can't recall. And the committee might have said yea or nay to that, and then it doesn't go forward.
That's why I was just gonna say to like, so we don't.
Yeah.
Good, not that I want to discourage any board member from saying anything and, and this is great.
I'm done.
No, that's fine, but like the, uh, I don't think anything to Beth said I've got a problem with per se, but like, I think the process is.
There's more, there's always more.
Send it to you.
Take it to the committee and then bring it back next year.
I wanna make one point about the abstinence statement. I believe we by law have to make a statement of abstinence being a way to prevent.
A way it works, a way it works.
I feel, I feel like the wording is actually more.
So I think that that statement was, is, was in there because of, we have to say it is a, it's also in when we get into our STIs, that abstinence is.
I think what she's saying is that it kinda says is the only way.
Yeah, 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 no, I understand what she said, but I was just saying, we might wanna change the wording next year to make sure.
I feel like, if I remember correctly, that the law is written, the abstinence must be the highest level, which is by the way.
Yeah, and there, yeah, the unit at the high school actually starts with abstinence. And then abstinence comes back again and again and again throughout the unit, as we talk to other, about other parts.
Information on date rape, uh, drugs remains pretty good.
Yeah.
And that was in there last year.
So from a procedural point of view, we obviously, there's, it's in the packet. Although, yeah, we have another meeting in order to officially approve it. Obviously, if there's anything that comes on the meeting, let you know.
And it's available in the packet to the public. And again, those videos that are password, they can call, are my office and with Tammy and can make an appointment.
I'm gonna bring popcorn, anybody wanted.
Um, okay, any other questions from the board? Thank you, Dan. Um, so at this time, the board would like to invite comments from the public. Is there anyone who would like to provide a public comment? You are Mr. Mr. Weesner, I'm sure you know the rules at this point, so I won't, uh, repeat them. But, uh, you have three minutes, uh, when you, when you start. You are Mr. Weesner, I'm sure you know the rules at this point, so I won't repeat them, but you have three minutes when you, when you start.
No, isn't. I just encourage, just a.
Yes.
I just encourage you to read this. First, how does I talk about the history type stuff? Let's go. The only one that I've learned here is the sex, the history of sex education is related to the Texas Legislature. As you said when I gave it to you before, what does a policy about that? Comparing sexual risk reduction, the jurisprudence, sexual risk avoidance and biblical theory. To tell you, I'm going around the left side, I live on the left side, you know, on the right. Realize that's not good. And then for six pages, that's Audrey Warner's, the expert on Kinsey. Her presentation to the Texas Legislature. And the last four pages in yellow are last year's stuff. Even the new board members haven't seen it, but it's on my website, tcfamily.org. Seca Circle, the Model Pino Code, how that got totally taken away to protect people. Seca Circles, all this planning and Planned Parenthood and all working together and being funded by Playboy and all this stuff. And the expert, how she saw there was evidence of harm, Audrey Warner. Judith Reisman article, talks about the Generations Ahead Program and religious definition. We're talking on one side, I'm a Christian, I look at it that way. But the other side is humanism, that's a religious belief too. And that one's got free rein in the schools right now. And it shouldn't be that way, it's harming these kids. Back to this handout, she used in the, just some quotes from that, nineteen sixty-four Secas, it's on page two of the white pages, in nineteen sixty-four Secas, the Sex Information Education Council of the United States. Planned Parenthood had, was, one of the founders, Hugh Hefner, was funding it. Lester Kirkendall. He's part of the Humanist Society. Dr. John Moni, he's the guy that started transgender, he's the guy that neutered one of the twin boys, called him a girl. Both of those twins committed suicide, but he was helping them out. And looking at the outcomes of sex ed, um, just all of that and. One thing is insincere, they say HIV can happen to everybody, doesn't mention that LGBT, same-sex attraction stuff is about twenty-five times more probable.
Thank you, Mr. Weesner.
Please consider this handout, sexually grooming the children is program.
Is there any additional public comments specific to the sexual education public hearing? Hearing none, I declare this public hearing closed. And the second, second public hearing will be held on August twenty-fifth, uh, at the Board of Education meeting. The, moving on, the next item for discussion is nine A, which is now the Central High School renovations. Uh, I'm deferring to Christine Thomas Hill.
Good evening. We discussed this at length at Board Finance and Operations. So I'll go through this, but if you'd like more detail, just let me know. With our user group, which includes Justin, the principal, some coaches and PE teachers, we really felt like we were kind of at a crossroads as relates to design and financing design. We have quite a few options available to us and really didn't wanna spend a lot of money on design for all of those options. But are looking for the board to narrow that down for us, so perhaps we can work on design for one option. This isn't an ask to actually do construction this way, it's to spend our resources on one option so that you have more information related to what a design could look like. So then we can get some further feedback from the community and actually get permission to go out for bid on the project. We've laid out three different options as it relates to what we've studied. As a reminder, our overall project goals, we have an estimated total budget of twenty million. Safety and security, we're looking at creating a single secure main entrance enhanced, with the vestibule creating one point of entry for the building, whether it's athletics or instruction or just during the day for school. And having an opportunity to separate after-hours events from the rest of the school. Circulation, improving student flow, to eliminate the need to walk through gym areas to reach classrooms. That also does hit on some of what Jesse talked about as relates to safety and some concerns for walking through hallways and stairs to get to classes in winter when they're slippery and wet, people with crutches and et cetera. Athletic facilities, increasing our regulation courts to four, we currently have two regulation courts and one practice. Providing centrally located locker rooms, this really is a during-the-day PE class difficulty at this point with locker rooms spread out throughout the building and only one or two teachers there to supervise students. So really looking at centralizing locker rooms. Accessibility in operations, improving ADA accessibility and sightlines, updating our systems and finishes, and then creating a clear internal separation for after-hours events, so that was hit on two. Minimizing disruption, obviously with any kind of construction like this, you're going to have disruption. So just looking at each option and what kind of disrupt, disruption and what level it has. And supervision, again during the day, making sure that the PE teachers have supervision of all the students, no matter which gym or weight, weights and conditioning room that they're going to. So the three options, the first one, we talked about quite a long time ago, the option to not do any kind of addition or demolition to re, just to re-renovate existing structures. This comes at a price tag all in at nineteen point six million. Some of the difficulty with this option is, first of all, anytime you do renovations of older structures, you don't know what you're getting into all the time, so little bit worried the, that the estimate on the cost might not be enough to consider some things that we might not know about until we get into the building. Also, you're really not able to make ADA accessibility completely accessible for everybody. You still have a challenge with the different levels and some of the structure being below grade, so that's not gonna go away. It doesn't increase the number of courts that we have. For disruption, this would eliminate a competition court for one basketball and volleyball season. And supervision, again, it doesn't increase daily supervision. So a lot of things we felt weren't, it wasn't really helping us get to secure main point of entry and all of those things that were part of our project goals. Here is the picture, I mean, really, it's just what it is. The only thing we could do with nineteen point six million is do a little bit of a increased renovation to try to make the main office more prominent where it is and to truly have a secure entry vestibule like the other schools have. Right now, we have the door locked in a way that it does operate that way, but we could, we could make it a little bit more prominent and add some features to it. But it certainly would not be a single point of entry. So that's a overall concept, existing building, doesn't really change anything. We would do some improvements to ADA, but it certainly wouldn't be complete easy access for all ADA accessibility needs. For option two.
Sorry, Christine, can I just ask you some there, I was, I mean, you said that, like, that's pretty limited, it also comes at a heavy cost.
Yep.
I just wanna, and I, I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I think you're the only one here from twenty eighteen. Earlier today, someone emailed us a spreadsheet of twenty eighteen bond plans. And for Central High School, the main gym exterior and interior renovations were on for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then that secure entry was planned for seven million dollars. Did these get, I, I mean, I'm guessing at least the latter did not get done at that time, so it was planned, but it didn't.
Right. And it, you know, when we do our capital bond plans for ten years or more, it's very flexible. We have thoughts and ideas of what we're gonna do and then we have to prioritize. So many of those items that were listed cost way more than we originally anticipated. Again, with the twenty, twenty eighteen bond, we were using information that we gathered five to ten years prior to that, because we didn't have funds to hire an architect and a construction management firm to go around and do facility assessments. So some of our information was old, but every one of those project cost quite a bit more. And so we did have to prioritize, so some of it didn't get done.
Yeah, so the main gym exterior and interior renovations, so it did not happen with twenty eighteen.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So option two, this would be no demolition of any existing structure, it would simply be an addition of a new competition gym. So this, about the only thing that this is a benefit to is no disruption to a volleyball and basketball season for one school year. Some of the other things, the total cost is twenty-one point five million, so a little bit over budget. We would not be able to do the new secure entrance vestibule in it with one single location for point of entry and then being able to separate it from after-hours events. This one actually increases our circulation square footage, making supervision worse. Athletic facilities, it increases our regulate, regulation courts to four, but really does it, because we're not touching the fifty-eight or sixty-eight structure, so how long would those even be accessible to us? So for a small period of time, we would have four regulation courts. But at some point, the nineteen fifty-eight and sixty-eight gyms won't be available. Our lockers alone, alone at some point will be condemned. So it doesn't put any kind of, any kind of renovations on those two structures. Accessibility in operations, so obviously the new addition would have good accessibility and accommodations for ADA. The other two structures would be untouched, so we would actually be increasing space circulation just to get people to and from the new to the old. Disruption, I talked about that, and supervision, I talked about that. Yes, yeah. The other biggest, biggest negative is how much room it takes from the parking lot and this gives you, I, I think it's between a hundred and a hundred fifty spaces we would lose, plus the bus drop-off for athletics. So there weren't, we didn't feel like there was a lot of positives on this one and, and neither did the Board Finance and Operations Committee.
Christine, you have a quick question. When we talk about ADA and we talk about these major renovations, we lose the grandfathering of the current structures. Do they then need to meet all of the current codes for ADA?
They do.
So if you're saying that option number one, for instance, wouldn't necessarily meet all of the ADA criteria.
It would, it would meet it, but it still wouldn't be easy. There would still be areas that wouldn't be easy to access. We would have to increase how many elevators, the size of the elevator, some ramping, increase our circulation to meet the code, but it still wouldn't be ideal.
So on all three options, we need to meet the minimum requirements for ADA accessibility?
I'm not sure on option, on option one, yeah, we would still have to meet it, it would just be based on the two structures that.
And I'm not saying you shouldn't, I'm just asking a question, okay.
Yeah. And then option three, which out of finance was the preferable option, this was demolish the nineteen fifty-eight gym first, so that we could build a new competition gym in its place, which would make the most sense as far as circulation, supervision, and to not increase the total circulation for the building. So in this option, we actually had two price, cost estimates that we talked about at finance. Nineteen point six would get us under budget or on budget. That would not allow us to do the wrestling room renovations, but at twenty million, two hundred thousand, we would be able to add wrestling to that. So for this one, there's a lot to like as it relates to hitting the project goals. Again, circulation, it minimizes additional square footage. It does create those lockers centrally located right next to weights and conditioning, the small gym. It's kind of centrally located between all of those gym spaces. And it's completely adjacent or across the hall from the other lockers. So it does help with daily supervision. Athletic facilities, it increases our regulation courts to three, not four. But that does provide the, the opportunity for the dedicated wrestling room, so you would have three regulation courts. The new competition gym would have two regulation courts side by side, be big enough for that, plus you would still have the nineteen sixty-eight gym. For disruption, obviously it does cause disruption, we wouldn't have a competition gym at this location for basketball and volleyball, just like the first option. But we do have some thoughts about that. And then security, this does, for the, the most important project goal that we had talked about is creating that single point of entry. Right now, we have students coming in off of Eastern, Milliken and the fire lane, all the way wrapped around the building. We would be able to create one single point entry that you could come in and go to athletics or go to the instructional wing. And all students and all visitors would be entering from, basically from the eastern side.
Did I understand on the current construction or the current layout of Central Gym, that it's not meeting all the requirements for competitive gym?
It does for one. It's got two small courts for practice only, but you can't actually play on those, you can't play a game on those two courts cause you don't have the fall, the room for the fall zone.
You can't really, you can't really practice on them either, the auxiliary basketball courts, the boundaries are literally an inch from the, the actual bleachers from the wall.
Sounds like Muskegon's gym.
Probably, probably.
So part of our process, we did discuss this at finance, we did have Ben here, the principal for Central High School and John Sonneman, we were asked, we asked him to join. Justin and Ben held a user group meeting with some community, community members, some current coaches, some former coaches and people that just have a general tie to Central that have had that tie for quite some time. And we got some feedback, so I'll, I'll let maybe you two kinda give a summary of what community members were there and what the overall concern or feel was for how to move forward.
Yeah, we had our, our current coaches that use the, use the gym for competition, so both our basketball coaches and our volleyball coach. And then we had Mr. Sonneman here join us and we had three, yeah, three alumni, three Traverse City Central alumni who either played in the gym, have kids that are, are going through the program currently or are just super fans as well. You know, the, the big concern or the big question was about the demolition of the gym at this point. But I think every, 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 and John, if you picked up something different, let me know, but the general consensus was they saw the need, although we appreciate tradition, we love our tradition and our history. You know, I'm wearing my eighteen fifty-three polo right now when Traverse City High School opened, right? We also understand that tradition and history can't get in the way of like actually serving our kids every day in PE and in athletics as well. That was my general consensus.
I think.
If I could make a comment, you know, I've probably spent more time in that gym than anybody here.
Yeah.
For sure, in my case. No, I've taught in that gym, my first classroom was in that gym building long before the sixty-eight building was even built. So I've been working in that gym since nineteen sixty-six. And like anything else, I, I don't think any of us have worked in an office for sixty-some years without it being totally changed. And it's a wonderful place. It's a nostalgia, there's a nostalgia to it, there's a character to it. But when I think about ADA compliance, when I think about a single entry to the building for security purposes, especially in today's society, when I think about the supervision of trying to cover all of the different areas that Dan and the other PE teachers need to do, it, it just, it, it needs to be changed. I'm concerned that we don't just build a new box. I don't wanna see a gym that is, you know, has bleachers to the sky. But I think the important thing is going to be how we design this new structure. And I think we can design it to be ADA compliant, to be a good competition area with some character and a good teaching environment for the kids during the, during the school day. One of the problems with renovating is you're trying to renovate a place that basically is concrete. It was wonderful when it was built.
State of the art.
Yeah, state of the art. One of the, one of the best competition gyms in the north, certainly. But times change, needs change, and I think it's time that we change.
Thank you, cause I know what it means to you.
Thank you. Again, I think out of the user group, there wasn't. Again, I think out of the user group, there wasn't overall concern that, it, it's hard to say, you know, we vote for this or we want option three without seeing what it looks like. But really what we're asking for is permission to move forward with one design, potentially with a visioning committee that does include, you know, what are those historic features? What is the nostalgia you would like us to replicate or bring into the gym? So the design will be very important to have community input, and potentially we'll be able to bring a couple of different options to the board and have the community weigh in on it. We're not necessarily saying we would like you to completely commit to this design, so we can move forward in the spring of twenty-seven. We just really want to focus our efforts and our dollars on one design.
I think the presentations were fantastic, and it pretty much leaves only one logical, but I would just ask the board if that is the case. But if so, I don't have, does anyone have any questions? I think it's pretty much covered, finance is amazing.
We don't need any peach baskets in this one.
Peach baskets.
Can, can I clarify? I think in, in finance, I think it was, and I speak up if it was different. I think having the wrestling renovations to that was, was included, was talked about. Option four essentially.
I changed option three to add a note at the bottom and folded it.
So that, to John's point, we're talking about option four with the wrestling room, correct?
Right, yes. Taking that small gym that, the newest gym actually, but which is not regulation size, and turning that into a wrestling area.
We've all seen that wrestling closet.
Yep.
Just before, the only question I guess I had, not to open up any cans of worms, but the nineteen sixty-eight gym.
So as part of this, this project with only twenty million dollars available, we wouldn't touch that. We would have to do, we would still have to have an elevator to get folks to the below grade, which I, I don't know if you guys know this, but originally it was supposed to be a pool, and they couldn't afford a pool, so they just did a gym but left it below grade. So we would have to maintain that, but I would propose in a new bond that that would be something that we would address with new bond money. And honestly, this project couldn't even start until as early as spring of twenty-seven, so it's a lot of work to do over several years, and I think we'll be potentially into a new bond scenario that it might really just kind of look like one project.
And that's kind of where I wanted, that's, I guess, and I know you said that in finance, but that was like my concern with doing, to your point, Scott, when we had this conversation, is like doing one thing and then having to come back, and then having to deal with the nineteen sixty-eight gym, be like, well, if only we had changed the wall here. You know, now we have to have a firewall here, and that's going to cost an extra X number of dollars. So like, when we're going through this process, I would, I would follow that. Is I think the board's general consensus is that we're trying to do things the right way, even if-
Efficiently.
Efficiently and cost-effective over a long period of time, rather than-
I think we did review that, and because the nineteen sixty-eight gym was built with an exterior wall and the hallway was added after the fact, there's a good separation there that we think that the only added cost that could be one time if we do demolish it later would be an elevator, an added elevator. Appropriately sized elevator, so that we have students that could actually fit into it with their wheelchairs. So as of right now, obviously, design might show something different, but I would keep you informed.
That's like, again, I get where we're going, but I think regardless of any of that conversation, option three is where we're all-
And so the board would be approving the design, and then after that design and visioning and all that, we'd be bringing that back to the board, obviously, you know, at a final point, to, to be able to ask questions and make sure these kind of things were followed.
Yep.
The goal originally would be to begin in the spring of twenty-seven and then finish in the fall of twenty-eight. So it'd be one season lost for volleyball and basketball. And Justin's got some pretty great ideas on how to accomplish, where they would go. Obviously, we have Montessori that could be the home for the Trojans for a bit, but also some other thoughts and other areas that we can use on those things.
To the tone court, we'd have to-
Right, yeah.
Yeah, okay, correct.
Yeah, sorry.
I moved that, the Board of Education approved option three with the wrestling room for twenty point two million dollars for the design of the Central High School renovation project. This will give administration permission to move forward with the design for this project.
Second.
Second? Okay, any other discussion? Can I kind of roll through that?
Sure. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Muammar?
Yes.
Trustee Bajiris?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy? Trustee Pack? And-
Yes, motion camis.
And just again, to be clear, that is only design of the building, not what you're seeing as a cost.
We'll be back on in front of you quite a bit.
Working with TMP for the design.
Yep.
And I'm sorry, did Justin, did you want to talk about the alternative site for CHS?
Well, I mean, you know, obviously with, with two years to go, we would have to get creative, but like, you know, Montessori's got a fantastic gym that we access currently. East Middle School is getting some major upgrades, this, actually the summer as well. That would make it a bit more appropriate to play some high school games on as well. And we're already accessing East Side Elementary Schools. For example, in the fall, when we do statewide testing, or even in the spring, we have to do statewide testing. We do those inner gyms, and so some of our teams have to go out into the Montessori, into Eastern, East Middle School, all sorts of things like that. So the logistical side of it actually is a fun puzzle for me, a fun project for me. So that would be a, yes, it'd be a challenge, but one that I would actually have a little fun doing.
Okay. Moving on to the next discussion item, now item B. The multipurpose fieldhouse. Again, this discussion is specific to addressing architecture and engineering services, but to, to Dr. Wagner.
Okay, very similarly, just looking at design. I provided the board with a memo that breaks down a lot of information that I've given the board over time. We've talked about, the first is just working with TMP on some, some pictures of what something could look like. They've done some of these in the past. They take kind of the pictures of something like they've done in the past, they put it on a plot of land, and they give you that as an initial talking point. So that's included in the, in the, with that, along with their proposal of what it would be to do the design work, much like we just talked about the gym, to do that design work. TMP is doing that, they would be doing this as well. Also in the packet is a five-year pro forma, essentially a business plan, that gives an analysis by a third-party group. Both Justin's here and, and Jason, our athletic directors, they had the opportunity to give input to SFA into that, to, to give some ideas into them. SFA is a, a national company that helps look at creating those models of business plans for schools, for facilities. And, and one of the unique things about that is had a real familiar, familiar, uh, thank you, familiar understanding of Traverse City. The gentleman that is the CEO of the company's parents live here in Traverse City. And so has been here well, he's done some things with soccer. Jason actually knew him in the past, some of the soccer things he had done across the state. So really have a real reputation for this work and creating what your expenditures are, what revenues are you can look like. And really, that, that was built upon the idea of this being a facility for our kids with just some small amount of, of, of opportunity for some tournaments and things, enough just to make sure that the revenues were able to cover the expenses. More could be done, but we're designed in the idea of this facility is for, really for our kids, for some of our community partners such as T-Bays and Waves and Youth Lacrosse and others to, to have some opportunity, which are made up almost all of our kids as well. So that gives you an idea of what that looks like. Also, the Great Lakes Sports Commission awarded a twenty-five thousand dollar planning grant to help pay towards some of the costs of getting the environmental, look at the property, to see if that is a feasible site. We've looked at many different sites of land that we own that was key. We don't have a lot. We have a plot of land at Potter and Four Mile, quite a ways out. We have quite a bit on Church Road, out on the very west side of our district. Thoroughby Field is a very small plot that also is a housing area, and so that is, is very tight and some struggle to fit what you might want from that standpoint as well. And the city right now has some ideas of some housing and some things, zone for that area. So we've looked, West Middle School, the, the practice fields over there, you have a big hill that you would get into, and, and also some wetlands area that cause a real problem there. Because we really tried the idea in the beginning of the center of the district, but really there's no feasible property that's there. So Carlisle Road was one that, that, that kind of fit that bill. It's the backside of East Middle School property we already have. There are soccer fields there already, along with some baseball and softball fields that we, to an extent, depending on design, we could keep. And so you would have access to outdoor and indoor, if you're running summer camps and such on that piece of property. So, so with that, we've been working with some different partners and community groups. You'll see if you can click slide for me here. So I mentioned the Northern Michigan Home Field Alliance, a nonprofit made up of some local folks that Jessica Sullivan was, did me a public comment, helping bring that group together to try and look at what are some feasible ways to do some fundraising and some things. Again, having it be about our kids and doing that. And so you may remember earlier, a few, quite a few months ago, I brought to the board the idea of getting approval to do fundraising for this, that the board unanimously passed to allow me to work with the Northern Michigan Home Field Alliance to start that work, to look at a fundraising campaign towards this. So next slide, if you would. Again, these are renderings that TMP put together of a very similar building. They're finishing Spring Lake right now, which is a very similar kind of building. They've also done Jackson, Detroit Country Day, quite a few others. They also did Legacy Center in Brighton, done others. So this is some of the pictures, if you'll scroll here. This is essentially on that site at, at Carlisle. Again, this is one orientation, there could be a different orientation that could slide it more to the back, going away from the road. Gives you an idea of what could be inside as far as surfaces. One of the things we, we've thought of, and when we, we visit a lot of these others, they have multi-surfaces. Some have a lot of baseball, softball nets. They have, you know, some have all-sport courts that are added in. If you go down to White Hall, they have one that has half-turf, have basketball courts in it. Some have tracks. Lincoln Down and Ypsilanti, Lincoln Consolidated Schools has one that essentially has the field, all of the field events and track, which they do. And, and they, they do use it as a profit model for, with their students and also doing large track meets, a lot of is what they do. And so I've had the chance to talk with their superintendent. I've visited there multiple times and what that looks like. With that field, you're able to see, they have five things going on at one time. They're running all their track kids, they're running a sports court. They've got the field separated into three for soccer, for lacrosse, and, and baseball, softball, all going on at the same time. So that, that's, that's one that, these models is what you see is based off of, that, that they took from that. So again, just gives you some ideas of what could be. There's nothing at all in stone, this has not gone through any kind of committee, there's nothing solid. This would give us the opportunity to, if we were to do design, to put a team together, much like we have every other project, Montessori, Central Grade School. We talked about Central High Gym, to put a group together and see what that might look like. And, and one of the goals is to provide some access for some kids possibly. We'd love to see if there's some opportunity for our East Middle School kids after school. You know, we do want to look at this as an opportunity for like maybe a free after-school program. We know at the west side of town that we have access to the Y. Some kids are charged with that, I did, I checked with Andy, about twenty-four dollars a month. They do have a lot of kids on free scholarship. That's something that I did talk to Andy as well, that we'd love to try and work at Conquering, to see if all kids at West Middle School had the opportunity to that, if this was there. He's very interested in that conversation, he's the executive director of the Y. So this, you know, gives you really that background. Estimated costs also are included in the memo, working with Hallmark Construction, a local firm we do a lot of work with. They are interested in, in being a part of this to a point even at a discounted rate to be able to give for construction management of this facility. They really are interested to see it built for the kids here, and are willing to do quite a bit of a discounted rate of providing that. They, they have a real history of that, many of their kids are in T-Caps. In fact, they're donating right now the install of the lockers in the soccer building over at West High School right now, putting them in for free. So this gives you that. Also in the presentation, one of the things that the Home Field, Home Field Alliance is wanting to do is if this was able to be successful, to try and raise more money and see if we would be able to help with the auxiliary gyms that could possibly help at Central. Put another one at West. We, many times the board has had people come to them and say, we don't have enough spaces for all the kids for the different opportunities. Thought it was something interesting when we met with the Central High School team. John Lober, longtime coach in our district, mentioned of when he had started, and I think John would say it as well, that Title IX was not in place for girls' sports, you know, when they started. And so now you've added girls' lacrosse, you have the, the flag, the, the flag corps that, and I never get the exact name right, of that, that work isn't banned, and they also now have a season.
Color Guard.
Color Guard, thank you, in the winter, so they're looking for space. They, I've met with their coach in that element. So trying to just find ways for different space for our kids, for different opportunities. You know, one of the things that we have, I could envision more of our robotics tournaments that are, have a large. Saginaw Valley has one of these, they host the state robotics tournament there. They're able to do that right there and have that, some things like that. So anything and everything that we could do to provide service to our kids, and not only just our kids, I think, you know, many of the districts in the region look to us as well for help. I had the Buckley Superintendent stop me and just said this would be something for our kids to be able to come to a track meet in the winter to do that, that we never could do, and that this is something that could provide the region kids with opportunity. So I've put all that information together for you. I also did, one of the things that I have had feedback from board members in the past, as we've talked about this, is first and foremost, that there needs to be a business plan and some money set aside upfront to make sure it's not a drain on the district's resources.
Absolutely.
The business plan, I believe, you know, creates that. Again, it's a third-party looking at that. I have had the chance to go look at other facilities, especially Lincoln. Many of the other ones that did not have that goal. If you go to Jennison, they said, nope, we're, we're good, we're going to pay for it out of our general fund. You go Jackson, the same way, they don't open it up to anything else, pretty much just their high schools. Lincoln's the model that I think is one, and would be happy to set up a visit, to be able to sit with their superintendent and others, to be able to see what they've done. I think it's quite extreme, they've gone to try and make three quarter, a quarter of a million dollars, you know, to be able to pay for things. I don't know, like, my goal in, in designing this was not really to make money, it was just to make sure to hit that goal of, you know, building a revenue model that, that doesn't cost the district. And also, I presented to the Traverse City Tourism Board about three weeks ago about the idea of this was built, of having a maintenance fund, making sure that there was a fund upfront that was in a restricted interest-bearing account, that would make sure that there was money there for when the turf needs replaced or the roof. We do something similar with Thoroughby Field, a dollar of every ticket. We have, that we collect goes into a reserve fund to make sure there's money for that facility. So we would see something very similar, probably even the ticket idea would be the same for this that we would consider when people come in. So, you know, with that, these are just some general thoughts of, you know, when design and engineering could start, if the board wanted to move forward, give you ideas, some timelines. You know, it would be close to a finish of similar, based on the timeline, we talked about the Central Gym, that this could be used as well. You know, Beth brought that up the last time we talked, asking questions about that. I have had the chance to talk to the folks at the Grand Traverse Resort. They have portable courts that they use for tournaments, they put over all of their tennis courts. Think there would be some interest in maybe trying to work out something there to be able to use those. So we had courts for the volleyball and basketball season, to be able to use those during the construction of Central as well, that could be done. But again, overall, trying to build something for our kids primarily, trying to make sure that it's multi-use. I also mentioned in the memo about LEAP of looking at extending opportunities there. One of the things, you know, that I, I hear all the time is we would like to have something for maybe each of our elementary schools of their, you know, winter time of their soccer team to be able to have, and be able to provide a league for all those kids that may not be able to do travel, may not be able to do those kind of things. So really, you know, going to be very open to that idea of what we can do as we go through strategic planning, those ideas, what do we want to do that's best for our kids, especially our kids that are economically disadvantaged, to make sure they have opportunity. So this gives us an opportunity to explore that, truly do a design, get an idea of what the costs are. Are there more avenues for funding? We do have still in the hopper with John Roth, that was covered in the Record Eagle, a request for funding that, you know, could be used. What other type of donation kind of things within kind might we be able to get? But until we get design and know exactly what that is, to be able to sit down with people and donors and all those folks on what that is, we wouldn't be able to do that, so- We wouldn't be able to do that. So, um, what I have here is that, uh, um, contract for. Uh, with T M P to do a design of the facility to see what that would look like and to be able to bring that back to the board. With some bid costs and such that give an idea of what that looks like, so.
Do you have a big enough space that you could put in a horse corral and a barn? I'm looking for other alternative funding.
Could you go back to the slide, just show the, showing the aerial view? Yeah, okay, so I can, I'm, I'm fairly familiar with EMS, so, um, I just want to make. That, that thick white line, the.
Yeah, that's a trail.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's partially paved and partially a wood, a bridge. That goes right there and it goes right to that site. I walked it about a week ago. Um, really well maintained, really nice wooded trail. Right now, some of our kids go, sometimes they, they go from there over to the softball field. One of the things we'd want to do is try and, and you can see this is a different design with the, with it going in a different direction. Again, when we get in design, we can look at all those things. I think one of the goals would be on that site is to maintain as much of another soccer field. And with the softball, one of the baseball softball fields. Um, there is another field at East Middle School that they also use. Depending on their time to the, the, uh, north of the building that you'll see there. So there's plenty of room for all that kind of activity. Uh, but one of the things we can see with LEAP is that summertime, we do like the kids, I, I'd be outside and be able to do some of that, but when it's raining and thundering. We don't have to tell parents we're canceled for the day, that we would be able to run those activities, kind of rain or shine. Um, so that's there, but that trail is, you know, well maintained. Um, it's a really, really nice trail that connects those two.
Something on here.
Yep.
This, um, that, that wasn't actually my, my question. I'm aware of that trail, but this is the envisioned parking lot for that field house.
And it's just, it's, this is just a drawing. There's no vision. That would all have to be a part of, of the work.
Reading this right. And then this, is this sent?
That's center ice.
Yeah, so right across.
And then just to the south is the armory.
Right. And is this thick white bar, uh, on, overlaid on Carlisle Road? Is that, what does that signify?
Just the road.
Okay. Okay. So that's right in the middle of the cross-country field. What, what they use for cross-country.
Well, there is. If you slay outside it the other way, it's not. So like I said, we would go through those design. One thing about this property. Did have initial conversations with East Bay Township about all those. It does have utilities. It does have water. It does have sewer. Some of those kinds of things with it. That's, uh, you know, with center ice being there and the armory, that's investments they made, but. Um, did, you know, looking at easements and there's also, uh, um, on the property, uh, on the far edge of municipal well. That's not an issue, you know, in it. But we would still have to go through environmental. That's a part of this, again, design. Checking all those things, seeing does this site suitable for it? And, you know, if so, you know, we know that if not. It would be coming back to the board to say, back to the drawing board on what site might look like. But again, of all the sites we own. You know, this has utilities and, and those kinds of things that a lot of our other properties do not unfortunately. Um, and again, the, the only other spot really was that spot at, at West Middle, but you would take away that entire. Football practice field and you'd have to cut part of the hill out that goes behind the baseball fields that. Could really be an issue with erosion, you know, probably have to build a retaining wall, you know, some kind of those things as we initially. Talked with, we talked, we did have it looked at by some of the local excavators, gave us a couple ideas and they just said. It can be done, but that's a challenge there. And, and other than Thirby, we don't really have any property and. And, uh, and, and Thirby is narrow and, and there, it is a housing community as well right there already. And, and parking for Thirby. Also is, is, is tight.
So four hundred cars, is that what you're envisioning?
Again, have not done anything with, haven't done any of that. That's where design, all that comes in with architects looking. There is somewhat of a parking lot there now. Um, I envisioned it to have to be expanded, but again, you know, that, there was a rough number that they gave there in the budget that it would fit. You know, based on the size, but again, till we get into design and all that to know exactly what that looks like, what can be. You do have to the, where the pine trees are, that is a wetland area. So you gotta figure out retention. That's all with architecture, engineering, design. That's what they do to say right up front whether this is a buildable site, then if so, where can you put it? What are your restrictions? How far does it have to be from one of the road? All those kinds of things. And that's what these folks do, T M P as professionals.
We do not want to shortcut the parking. And the second concern is egress. Uh, getting into the facility and getting out of the facility has to be really considered. These are two lane ramp roads, are they not?
It is.
Yeah. And so that too is gonna be real important.
And, and they, you know, they have experience with dealing with center ice and getting out right across the street as well as the armory, but that's something we would work with. Township, the architects would, that's exactly what they do, Beth. And we would bring that back for the board to be able to give input and, you know, things like if that was the case.
It's a lot of money for athletic facilities. Especially when I can hear the music people in the back of my head talking about we need a performance venue as well.
And that would be, you know, I've said all along with this, that, um, I've mentioned that to Jessica, that's would be our next project we would go after is. I've said it to Flannoy when she was on the board, that, that is something that I think this community definitely needs and is interested in. And I think I'm interested in trying to, whether I'm here, retired or whatever, still living in Traverse City. I'm committed. I think that's something that our community needs as well and something that we would love to see and, and, uh. See if we can get philanthropy as well behind that.
Is can you put in some. Possibilities so that actually you might be able to use it almost.
So Jenison does that now. They have a band tower in it. Um, and they're able to put the acoustics and everything in for their band to be able to use as they practice for competitions.
Or it would also be almost like an outdoor concert.
Good.
Facility.
And again, that's caused to that, but you can talk that and, and put it as options in design.
Um, and one thing I think to clarify too is, I, and I think we're all, all in agreement that. The, the goal coming out of this is that it's self-sustaining, including upkeep, replacement and any long-term costs that come with roof replacements. But, and that number should be zero from the operating fund is our goal. But at the same time, it is worth noting that we currently do expend operating fund dollars on things that we're wrapping into this budget as well. Like, we've got, uh, at least a part-time lead coordinator that we're talking about wrapping into this project. So if even, I, I don't want to sell it to the community that we're making money on this project. I think we could if we wanted to especially. Um, it's a balance of.
But it's not to come at the cost of our kids having access.
Exactly. And that's why.
And that's not what it's being built for, for, you know, other people, other than just as making the business plan. So there's just enough of it. To be able to make it sustainable with, again, if there's an element of, of money that's generated that we can use for LEAP, other things that. But again, we would take direction from the board on how far we want to go with that.
But if we achieve that, we're actually helping to a, a small extent, but certainly an extent of our operating fund. Because we do have, we are pulling a few things out of there with LEAP.
And that would have to be talked about with, you know, what the board's goal, budget-wise of things. But again. Get through design, all that, what that looks like, and then we can have all those kinds of discussions as well.
Um, and then my only other point was to the fundraising of, we've talked about, yeah, um. Uh, other venues and other kinds of facilities. I think one thing, talking to business owners across town is, uh. There's no one that's actually managed to pull off any sort of these projects because no one's been able to hold everything together. Cause it is so. Confusing and so many pieces. Uh, we've got a fundraising group. We, we have a lot of wealth in the community into. That do seem to be doing things, just not with us or these sort of venues. And I, I do feel like this is a practice run for. A completely different type of funding model personally.
Well, I wouldn't want to have that get lost in this discussion either. We really do appreciate the fact that there's. Contributions from the general public in a private, public partnership way. I was involved on the board when we tried to do the Performing Arts Center at Central High School and that was solely on the backs of T caps. And it didn't go very well. Um, this collaboration I think is invaluable. And I also think these drawings are the next logical step because it's the only way to pin down. A hard number on exactly what this money costs.
The only thing I want to kind of cushion of public-private partnership is, we would own this. T caps owns it.
I understand.
Runs it, maintains it, you know, with that, with that excess fund, but that we were able to control that it's for our kids first. And so I just want to make sure that's clear. And again, appreciate the, the partnership of the nonprofit others and, and. But that's the, the one thing with this is that, you know, we, we sometimes do struggle like, you know, with the Y at their capacity is only so much for their pool. Our kids would love to get in their pool at the, at the Y, you know, on Silver Lake Road, but it doesn't happen. And so. That's one of the things with this is the, the, the T caps does control and own the building, you know, from its opening.
I understand that, but I also think that the source of your money is totally across the community. Whether they have kids in school, whether there are kids, you're paying tuition to go to another school. So it really is something where you have to acknowledge. A certain amount of utility to the whole community.
And that's something I asked, uh, Jason and Justin can speak to that. They put together a mock, uh, draft of kind of what that would look like. With some of the T B A's and the other groups that have talked to them about that access. And every time I've had the chance to talk to any of those groups. They've literally been said, we would just love to have a day, uh, an evening, you know, like we, that we don't have now. I think we can do more than that, but. Again, I think that you lay out what the board's goals are for access primarily first and foremost to our T caps kids, but. You know, there'll be room. It's gonna be packed. It's gonna be running from early morning to late at night, you know, from that aspect, uh, you know, with opportunity. Um, but I think you can acknowledge that and you can meet that. And our A D's have put together some preliminary scheduling of what. Together for both high schools as well as, as, uh, our middle schools and those groups of what that could look like.
And I think to John's, uh, I think what John was also getting at is we could turn, we could. Alter thinking and turn this into a larger profit center, which isn't what T caps is about. We're about educating kids. Um, so that's the community focus, but at certain time we do have to have a few events to make sure that we. Ensure that we don't touch the operating fund. So like, that's what we're talking about, show, whatever it may be.
I agree with you.
We could go much further down that rabbit hole, but we don't want to. We want it for things that benefit our ki- the kids in our community.
And, and that was when, you know, going back to twenty eighteen, like when I first started this conversation with Jason Carmin is at hack, there was the, the proposal put in there. Record Eagle ran a story even just shortly before the election. They talked about an indoor practice field. And so that's what kind of started our conversations with all this and had the chance to meet Jessica and others. And began continuing the, the conversation and what that could look like. Um, this is definitely larger than, than just an indoor practice field. Um, but, you know, that, that gives opportunity with the philanthropy part of it like that. Gives us the ability to have something larger than just a smaller indoor practice field. Um, that's what you'd look at Jackson. Like in others, they just kind of have a half, but you know, they, they only, they, they don't let anybody else use it outside of their, in their community. It's just a program for their kids after school and just their sports teams. And so this gives us an opportunity to have something more. Than what might have originally been visioned. It wasn't here in twenty eighteen. Jason was, I'd be able to talk to that, but as we are, but, but it gives that opportunity.
Well, I can see, you know, summer camp being very important. There's a serious need for that. In the community daycare, I think there's a very serious need for that. I could see kids that were having a real struggle in math to give them the carrot. Of if you make a certain level, you're on this team and you'll be acknowledged, you know.
And I think that some of when we do strategic plans, some of the conversation about what are we offering our kids, especially our kids that are economically disadvantaged. To have some opportunity. And so I, I'm, I'm excited about looking at what are all those opportunities to be able to do that.
And I, you know, looking back, um, you know, having served, you know, the longest on the board, I mean, this conversation has been going on. For a really long time. Um, the, our board has asked for a business plan and that was provided. Our board has asked for funding to come forward so that we didn't have to carry the weight and that has come forward. Um, you know, we, we asked Traverse City Tourism, um, to step forward in a sponsorship role and that, that has come forward. And then of course, the planning grant. And so I feel like, you know, we've asked for all these things just in the last couple of years and we're at that point. Uh, where the next logical step, as Scott said, is to, um, allow for that design, uh, element to come up with. What would this cost look like? Um, and, you know, so, um, and just a couple other points. Um, we had some emails saying that the location isn't ideal, which in the beginning I was, uh, uh, very, uh, vocal about the location. Uh, however, um, it is six miles to Traverse City, I'm sorry, to Central High School and eleven miles to West Senior High. So we're talking about a four mile dis- difference between the two schools. Um, I do agree it is on that central side. Um, and again, you know, down the road, looking at maybe smaller facilities at, at each high school would be, would be great. Um, but, and, and one last point I really want to make, on the heels of the Central High School gym discussion is. A lot of that discussion is about safety and changing what is there because of safety issues and. Having been at West Senior High with my two kids, uh, not central because my kids don't go there, but. Um, a friend got a concussion with a lacrosse ball last year in the gym because they were trying to practice. Um, watching my son do hurdles in the hallway while kids and parents are trying to walk around, um, is not safe. Um, watching students that can't practice and then are thrown into a soccer game with like one practice is not safe. Um, and I just really look at, you know, preventing injuries and allowing our kids just more time to prepare. For competition outside of our area. I just think that our kids deserve this and. This has been talked about for years and it's, the, the plan is put in place and, and I, again, I'll say it again, Dr. Van Wagner, Jessica. I applaud all of your efforts in this and bringing the right people together. Um, and, you know, we're looking at additional bond money that's left over. And potential donations. This, this wouldn't cost, um, our district. And I just think that, um, from that perspective. Um, you know, I look at when we built our STEM labs, we didn't have the population to fill those STEM labs. The goal is. That's the way technology is going and that's what we want to provide for our students and be cutting-edge technology. So we built these amazing. Innovation and manufacturing labs and with hopes to grow those programs. And so, um, I think that this provides. And I, and again, I, I've said it at finance, but I love the idea of, of LEAP and providing more opportunities to kids. Right now, LEAP, um, is at a negative two hundred thousand annually. If we can, again, have those tournaments that could write that and actually put us into the green with revenue, that's the goal here. And I think there is opportunity. You look at the pro forma, you look at other sports complexes or in- indoor facilities. And depending on how we decide to use that facility, I think we can not only be in the green, but also. Possibly fund kids that can't afford LEAP and can't afford to join travel teams and can, and, and talk about equity. I mean, this is a way to bring more income into our district and create more equity i- in my opinion.
And even beyond the revenues of the center, I think again, showing the public donors that we can do it helps with the S S M, which could help with LEAP.
Mm-hmm.
Already seeing, seeing it. So, I mean, yeah, I, I do know there's some other points that I, and happy to have them. Um, as well, I will just say that as I, you may not be able to tell, but I did grow up a very red-headed child, uh, and gray now. And, uh, being outside in the sun was not for me. I remember the only time I actually got to do a camp, it was a cricket camp and I. Had thirty-degree burns at the time and, uh, could only do indoor facilities as growing up. So it's not for everyone.
Camp, that's just doubly painful.
It really was cricket camp. I didn't make that up. Um, so it isn't for everyone, but any, what other questions, what other, anything?
I just have a quick comment and I won't, I mentioned this during finance, I won't go into detail, but it's no surprise that I'll, I'll ask for a delay for this. And not because I don't think it's, um, I love the vision, I love the purpose of expanding our after-school and, and summer offerings through LEAP. Which again stands for learning enrichment and athletic programs, um, to benefit the learning and health and wellness of our kids. Um, is a massive opportunity to like, like Erica's talked about, to make it more inclusive and equitable. Currently there's a massive opportunity gap between the kids who participate and those who cannot. Um, currently we state that LEAP off, uh, offers PK to twelve, when actually all we, we're currently offering is grade two to eight. So we're missing our youngest learners and, and our high schoolers. I think that's an opportunity. And, and with the Traverse City Tourism sponsorship and, and our new foundation, I, I truly believe that we can, um, make. Uh, LEAP free for all students, K eights. And, um, so my next logical step, you know, in, in. Context to Scott's is to make sure our, our, our alignment is, um. In, in sync with what we're about to approve at the end of August. And I'll just remind us all here, we all know that we have goals around, yes, we have goals around health, we have goals around wellbeing. And I'd like to see that, uh, three to five-year commitment around really robust, uh, audacious goals. Um, that we can then make sure this project aligns with. Um, there's currently also a lack of clarity around the district's financial. Outlook and the ticker this past weekend, we're talking about, uh, belt tightening and I, and I know, and we all know here the different pots of money. But I, I take that serious and I think with one pot of money. Uh belt tightening and I and I know and we all know here the different pots of money, but I I take that serious and I think with one pot of money. Versus the other pot of money to make sure that that financial outlook, um that we're we're taking seriously, making long term sustainable decisions. I'd like to, I haven't heard from LEAP program, a a LEAP director, our health and well-being committee about what an expanded LEAP. Could or should look like, I I'd love to to hear about that. You know, to John's point, I I love John saying that we're gonna form a visioning committee, I was kind of wondering, you know, where's the visioning committee with this? Since we have one for the for Central and uh Central grades, so I love that that and I think that that should come first to me, so. I'm I'm very supportive of the vision and the purpose, you know, I'm a health advocate, you know, I I love fiscal activity. Um um but I'm I'm not uh I'm not supportive of the timing and process.
Well, let let me make a comment, I think the board is completely capable of multitasking, I think the points you're bringing up, Ty, are probably good ones. I think we owe it to those people who, like Jessica, who have been courting private donations for well on three years. To show evidence of the fact that we're serious about this and that at the very least, we wanna move on to get some engineered plans and get a hard number. We will have another conversation after we get those numbers in, I'm sure. Um but I I don't, I don't think delaying this is fair to anybody in the public, it's not fair to those people. TCAPS who are starting to lay plans on how they might use this facility. And I I just think we need to move, public entities are famous for kicking the can down the road and waiting for consensus on things. And I think we have the majority of the people that have responded and evaluated this are in favor of at least taking the next step. Whether that means a field house at the end of the process, I don't know, but at the very least, we gotta know what we're talking about.
I do have a sense of urgency with the fundraising, with the fact that we may need. Not necessarily need, but it will make our lives a lot easier with uh Central High School. Um and the funding model. Like, yeah, we're gonna have, with this funding challenges coming up with all the all of the budgets at the federal and state level and anything we can do to leave it. Even if it is a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars, it's gonna be huge for us, so.
Yeah, so I I wanna first acknowledge the enthusiasm and the excitement and the work. Over several years that many people have put into this. Um namely Jessica Sullivan and Dr. Van Wagoner, Trevor DeCoch, Warren Call. Scott Newman-Bale and Erica Moon Moore. Um so nothing that I'm going to say diminishes that and I I won't reiterate all the benefits that that people have. Extolled and and I'm right there with you in terms of what I think this will bring to could bring to our community. Um just to, for the record, I've been on this board since January of twenty twenty one. And it didn't come to the board, this board's attention until. February of twenty twenty three, when I was then on the finance committee with Andrew Raymond, Holly Byrd. And we three were the first ones to get this presentation. Three issues that I raised at that time were the long term maintenance costs, how they would be covered, um so that it wouldn't erode our general fund. Secondly, was security plans and protocols, because anytime you open up a TCAPS facility to public use. You're creating vulnerabilities, um and thirdly, the ongoing operational costs, again, to reduce any strain on the general fund. So Dr. Van Wagoner has worked hard, I think, to address those concerns. Um lo- large to a great extent, I don't, I don't know all of the, you know, plans, like the security in particular. But I know he's he's listened to me, I know he's tried to get those concerns addressed and I really appreciate that. So where I am now though is, I as a board member have been privy to this being picked up. You know, publicly or privately over the last two and a half years. But I'm in a position of privilege here as a board member, what's really come to light now to me with the ticker and the record eagle. The emails we've gotten, the phone calls, the text messages, et cetera, is that as tumultuous. As this has been for a lot of people, it's it's an unknown to others in our community. There is a lot of confusion, there are a lot of questions being raised, now some of it. Is people not understanding the difference between a bond fund and a general fund. Um what the different pots of money are and how they can be used, but there have been, you know, teachers who've come forward saying. Hey, we can't even get chairs and desks that are appropriate for our science classroom. If there are excess twenty eighteen bond funds, why can't I get new furniture? Um you've got, you know, neighbors and and other community members who are just questioning our fiscal responsibility. And I just wanna remind everybody that five years ago, when Scott Newman-Bale and I ran for office. This district was in bad shape. Um it's it's public reputation, um and we ran independently. I think on platforms of transparency, fiscal responsibility, good governance. And I just don't wanna jeopardize the public trust on this project, I think it's too important, too big. So I would propose that the district, in conjunction with its partners, TC Tourism. And the Northern Michigan um. Home Field Alliance, um hold a couple of information sessions on site. At East Middle School, maybe have one at Central High School, West Senior High, just to be geographically neutral. But hold two or three information sessions so that the district and and partners can. Answer community questions, explain how all this funding works. Um bring them up to speed on the history and the evolution to how we got to where we are, because if. You know, some people remember it was gonna be two locations, ten million dollars each and a fifty fifty cost split, now it's seventeen million dollars, one location. And the financing has has evolved as well, so I just see the benefits of. Better communication about all of this as something that could build public support for it. And maintain, even raise dollars for that matter with the 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 private fundraising piece. And thirdly, maintain the public's trust to support the district with future bonds and millages. So that would be my recommendation before we move forward as a board to approve the expenditures. Of any site design envisioning.
Um I think we we literally had a ticker article six months ago, like there was a, this isn't the first article.
Right.
That specifically said, this is what we're looking to do. Um and I I agree that like the visioning and all this stuff, there should be public meetings and we should have discussions, but. Uh quite frankly, if you wanna be f- fiscally responsible, we've got a lot of money on the table and I don't wanna lose it.
And I think Scott's point is well made, it helps a lot better to have the plan. And to have a sign, you know, that's where I wanted a map. I'm beginning to sound like that woman in The King and I, I wanna house, I want a map that says. Here in our school district is where this is, and here is where that is and you can see the distances and you can see.
The parking.
Yeah, the parking, I care about that parking, I do.
And I I think that next step is bringing people in with the design. It's hard to me to bring a group of people together when we don't have a lot of direction, because then you, there's just too many voices there. Uh not a lot, in no direction.
It's very confusing, like we've spent years on it and with.
And we're just kicking it down the road further. So I feel like if if we're spending that money and it is designated for that, then moving forward with it.
So I I moved that the board of, I moved that the Board of Education approve moving forward with contracting T M P architects. To complete the architecture and engineering A and E services for the multipurpose field house as discussed.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, um so there is a motion on the table, um if there is any last points without going into a ton, we can, we have a vote on the motion, see if that succeeds.
I just wanna ask a clarifying question, you said that it would be fiscally irresponsible not to approve us tonight, could you explain that?
Yeah, I think we've heard multiple times, we've had money on the table that's gone away and.
You're talking about the private dollars? Or, okay, just to be clear, we're not talking about, you know, the bond funds.
I'm talking about private dollars, I'm also talking about the fact that we need a plan so we can go to legislatively. And say, we have a plan, this is what it is, because it's it's a lot easier to sell. Uh appropriation or any sort of public help on state or federal level.
Okay, so that's a new piece of funding, that's a yet another.
That's a part of the budget process, I think now is the time we have money on the table, we've got an opportunity legislatively, we need to explore both options and we need a design to do it.
But it wouldn't hurt if actually the plan came in just a little bit less than six hundred fifty bucks.
Yeah, I think that I think that is, yeah.
My feelings, one I.
I'll work every bit of it if it's approved to try it, I I got it knocked down quite a bit already, it was one three, got it now down to six fifty, but. I'll keep trying, you know, from that aspect and look at, you know, at their end, continue to look for additional grants. I know the Great Lakes Sports Commission also did say that they're willing to look at, you know, another grant as well, um of more. Um something of six figures, you know, to to try and offer, um so I'm gonna continue to explore all those things as well.
Up front is where the expense is at this point.
Agreed, um so Tammy, please conduct a roll call, but.
Uh trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Trustee Bajeras?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
No.
Uh trustee Pack?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
No.
President Newman-Bale?
Yes, motion carries, um and I do appreciate the board, this isn't an easy subject, it's and we. One thing I think we need to do out of it is we we definitely need to keep on focusing on community engagement and getting these designs done, because there is a lot of work to do. And now we've said that, I think that it's gonna be in everyone's uh face a little bit and now we. Um moving on to the next discussion item, which is now item C, Saban renovations. Um con- considering our contracts is listed in the bid memo, define to Christine Thomas Hill?
Yes, um so I don't have a presentation on this one, but this is um a bid for, um we actually utilize the construction management firm. So we have bids for every trade, uh this is why you're seeing so many uh contracts recommended to be awarded instead of a single general contractor. Um so this is to renovate um half of Saban that was the old elementary school, minus the section that we already rent out. Um to the state police, um other than we would do some renovations to their spaces for external windows and doors. That would all be updated throughout the building, but the goal here is to get um H R and business office there before this building has to be vacated for Central Grade. So we did go out for bid, um we were pretty pleased with the number of bids rece- received. And um a little bit lower uh than we had originally budgeted.
And originally, it's this has been numerous revisions, but I believe originally we had ten million in the bond, we reduced it to five million based on some things and now it's coming in.
And this, and what you're approving today is construction only, so it's still higher than that, but it's still less than five million at this point, so.
That's good news.
We've been really pleased with how bids are coming in and the number of bids we're receiving. So there there might be a little bit of a a a change in the trend, which is good news, especially when we're coming up on Central Grade School, yeah.
Generally, we've been seeing a.
Yeah.
Pleasant uh and and an urgency from companies to seek a lot, even getting calls back on bids, which is exciting.
Mm-hmm, it's nice to have a competitive environment.
It is, uh um and it's not exactly like it it used to be of grade, but it's.
Yeah.
No, you know.
So Christine, I was just curious, the was three million what we were projecting? Or in like a few years ago with the with formulating the needs for the twenty twenty four bond?
Um no, we were projecting ten because our goal was to get all of Central Office over there and that was the budget. This only gets H R and business office there, we're we're at, right now, the plan is to relocate Superintendent's Office. Uh Communications and um Curriculum Instruction to Central High School, unless something else becomes available. For a temporary housing.
No, it's the area that was vacated with the STEM area, all of the, everything that moved with that, it's down kind of um closest to the college. Um in the back right there, so that's the area that, there's about six rooms that were vacated. With robotics gone and the computer labs and all that that moved to the the Innovation Manufacturing Centers, that's the area we're looking at.
We have double wides on, I was in school at Central.
Got a math class on the double wide.
I've taught in a, it's not a double wide, by the way.
Mobile, portable?
A mobile, that's a, a mobile classroom. My very first year I taught, it was in a very cold morning, every, all winter.
Um on this project, we are recommending approval, I'm sorry, uh approval of alternate two, so we we asked for alternates. So that we can get pricing on something we um don't have to necessarily accept if we feel like our budget is too high, not knowing how the original budget comes in. We asked for two alternates, one was just redoing the sidewalks as is, the second one is to increase parking, redo all sidewalks. And provide more ADA up close to the front of, front of the building. And we are recommending accepting alternate number two, the only other difference on this one is we're actually recommending a fifteen percent contingency and that's due to the age of the building. We've done that the past couple of years, we just have found, um when you're in there with environmental remedies, sometimes you find a little bit more than you were expecting. And to have that actual con- extra contingency is nice.
So so just, so I can keep my math, I say that, I'm never gonna keep it right, but um with the. Well, obviously we had the five and you said it was gonna come in less even after the additional items, I mean, how much less, what are we talking?
Um I would have to get my numbers on design and all of the um asbestos removal work, cause that is separate. Um I I think it's a little over four.
That's gonna, I mean, I'm talking like.
Close to, close to that.
And I know this is complicated because of Central Grade School, you know, it's intertwined with with uh some Central Grade School. Students being here temporarily for a couple of years while that building's being renovated, but what is the long term vision for Saban? Is it to house H R and finance permanently, what are you all thinking?
The goal, the goal would be to have all of Central Office there.
Okay, eventually, okay, so would this take care of that, we want it done with?
This is gonna be done for the long term, the offices and all that, for H R and finance, you already have uh tech over there. You already have another print shop over there, the investments have been made in, you know, in the past with it, so. I know we've gone back and forth on that question a long time, but the answer is eventually, yes.
Even curriculum.
Josie's saying this is not gonna cover that though.
Right.
No, all we're saying is from a vision of what work's being done is permanent for the future.
It used to be ten, now it's four, but there's gonna be more when.
But again, not a part of this bond, it would have to be in the future, we're going for the rest of this and we're gonna go into a rougher area. But I felt it was important enough to cut, you know, down the bond and and I, you know, Jesse and and Dan and we all felt we can kind of be, sometimes might be good in a school. You know, and so at least for a while, we decided to go that route, do the part for business and H R that has a lot of summer interviews, things like that. And to have Evan right there, it it, you know, in print shop, it all kind of fits from that standpoint. And then as far as this building, that's something the board will have to decide in the future, we don't really have anything, we've had a lot of conversations in this community about early childhood needs. And what could this building possibly serve with that, but that's quite a ways down the road.
I moved at the Board of Education, approved the contracts as listed in the bid memo, including alternate number two for the renovations of Saban building for total not to exceed three million. One hundred forty two thousand one hundred sixty eight dollars, which includes a fifteen percent contingency, the project will be funded with capital on cons. From twenty twenty four.
Second, um any other discussion, um Tammy, please conduct a roll call, but.
Uh trustee Sch- Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Hardy?
Yes.
Trustee Bajeras?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
President Newman-Bale?
Yes, motion carries, uh moving on, which sounds like it's gonna be a a sort of interesting update on the school's safety, safe practice scores.
Yeah, so this really is an extension, you know, that the board had requested um with our conversations on Frankie Road and and know a lot of. You know, it's gone quite a bit about of different ideas of safe route to schools and we put some work into that and. We're really still there, we're we're waiting on approval for a next step of, you know, the some initial data's been created. Still not really a a complete plan by any means developed for a safe practice schools grant. I think that's one of the things I wanna make clear is that if by chance that money somehow comes back or another funding from the state or whatever, like. It's still very preliminary, anything really can be done towards the West Middle School area um with that. But right now, again, that letter came, I I do fear, um just from that letter and you all had the chance to read and see it. That I think that the funding is at least paused and I, so I think all action and opportunity will probably be paused. From that element, but at the same point, I still think getting some clear direction from the board, I've requested that. Um to to really know of of, we do have, we've had conversations with Meyer, you know, they they were. Willing to be a a party to conversation, um people are. You know, they they were willing to be a a party to conversation. Um, people are park in their lot and walk. Um, you know, we we can't use any of our dollars from a a bond standpoint or whatever on the other side, the Meyer side of the road or anywhere not on our property. Um, so, you know, it's just a question of a a one clarity to can you give you is the the lot of parents have asked, you know, can we put a crosswalk? And there was even some today that the board got. Of putting a crosswalk across there and again, you know, that would have to be a general fund expenditure. If Meyer was even willing, if it's not a safe route to schools grant, I don't know what they're willing to do. We never did get into put anything in writing. We just had verbal conversations. Scott was able to get me in touch with one of their head lawyers to be able to have an initial conversation with that. Um, but I did also have the chance to talk to Jim Pavelko, who was the superintendent at the time when designing everything was done and. And he acknowledged that he knew and his decision, you know, was clear that there was gonna be some tight parking realities at Montessori. There were pros and cons of the site. On the on the uh east end of of uh Throby Field that had its things and with the city and such with the road. Um, there were, you know, things at at the site where Montessori was built, but he uh he acknowledged he knew that and made the decision to make that recommendation and move forward. And and there was a clear conversation that there would have to be some parking um at West Middle School for staff and parents even as well to maybe walk their kids. Why partially the Buffalo Trail was redone in that element. There's some lighting that was put up to be able to make sure even when it was darker in the morning or evening, there was lighting and such put there. And so there there's that piece to this, but also wanna acknowledge, I think Ty has brought up some good points about, you know, do we wanna take a look at some of our policies in the future about. Walking and biking to school and looking at some of those opportunities and, you know, what are what are do we have in place? And that's something that, you know, if the board wants to visit that, I think uh that's something that we have some interest. I don't think that the Trune ones that we adopted probably go like for miles around a a school, how far we transport, those kind of things, what things do we have in place? For biking and walking and suggestions, just making that clear to parents. Here's a great opportunity and encourage walking and biking to school. Um, so that's all kind of in this.
And I do think we do strongly support that as a board is like, I mean, it's a low-cost alternative ties point. It's like providing alternatives.
Well, we gotta put the work into it. It's something that, you know, probably through exec or even, you know, a subcommittee to take a look at, you know, what that looks like. I know we we've looked at that and think that's a good idea. Um, but it's all kind of intertwined and just wanted input thoughts you guys have um that, you know, see. Again, you know, is that something still even if a safe route to schools grants there or not of the crossing component to to consider? Is it more encouraging, you know, based on the ideas and what Jim had told me about trying to more utilize the lot at uh West Middle School by the the. Football field area there that's right next to the Buffalo Trail to walk down. So um open that up to conversation with the board really for some clear direction.
I have a question. Does anybody of the faculty park up there at this point on a regular basis?
Yes, some do.
And about how many? Would you say maybe five percent, ten percent?
Can't give you a number. I could tell you cars if I had to guess. There's probably ten. You say about that? I I always park there when I go, so I park there and walk down next to the playground in that element and. And there are a lot of parents as well that'll pick kids, kids will go up the Buffalo Trail and meet their parents right there and um and do that. So, but I would say there's probably ten utilizing it at this point. You know, regularly, if I had to guess from when I go there.
Just from the staff, right, not the parents?
Correct, correct, yeah. Often I go midday and so, you know, it's not drop off or pickup, you know, from that.
Um, who you? None, I had a couple. One, one's just a clarifying question. We're not allowed to use capital bond funds on land we don't own, land we don't control. So like if you, are you allowed to lease school buildings?
I'm sorry?
Like for instance, if you leased a school, is like when for instance, North West said, cause they expend money specifically, do you?
I don't know. That would be a question. I don't think so for my conversation with Chris I Marino at Trune. Um, but definitely for sure, if we don't own it, but I don't think leasing, that essentially, you know, you'd still don't own and, you know, that element. So it's not permanent. So I think it has to be something you pu- put in the a permanent unless the board then makes an action to sell.
Yeah, I think if we don't own it, you can spend bond funds on things that are in it that you can take with you, like furniture, fixtures and equipment, but not anything that would stay with the building.
Like sidewalks.
Right. I can agree with you, but it's kind of wrong.
That that crosses the world one off the list. Uh, but then, so I think.
I will double check on that, but from everything I I think I've I've talked to, that that's it, but I will give an opinion from Trune on that for sure for you.
So I think, I mean, number one thing is with the Frankie Road reconstruction coming up, we have to obviously put pressure on discussions we can to getting. Any of the elements that would reduce the cost of anything we can do. Um, there is, I think it's a little hard, but when you were saying about the. I I don't know, but we can feel it in the area to pick up area out there, maybe a little bit of importance there. I mean, I know about as a parent, I'll make my kid walk uphill. If it's gonna, if I'm not gonna have to line up for thirty minutes, um. Maybe e- encouraging good being able to walk up the hill is one option. Um, and then other than that, I think then we have to come back to the. Especially after we find out what we can do with the reconstruction on the Frankie Road reconstruction, we come back and we have to have a discussion. If we have to contribute, if we're willing, if we can, um, general funds, I think.
And I think not not only the discussion with the the road situation, but with Meyer, you know, that that was it was originally talked about regarding a grant and but uh. To circle back around and say, okay, would you allow us to put a crosswalk in if if you have some funding?
It it and I need some direction from the board. If that's what you wanna do, like I guess that's all. I don't wanna call kind of again on maybe than kindas and not really.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I think that there's some differences of opinion here that I, that's why I'm looking for some clear direction.
Here, the key issue here is crossing Frankie Road, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, to me, there there are a few facts, I think, that are worth sharing um regarding parking. Cause I don't, I don't think we have a parking. At Montessori. There are one hundred and two regular spaces at the Montessori parking lot. Um, thirty-three are on the side of the pre-K through through toddler, preschools and toddlers. So by regulation, those parents have to park there and drop off. The regular parking lot for uh kindergarten and up, that there are sixty-nine regular spots there and then there are six handicap spots between those two. Two on one side, four on the other. So we've got a total of a hundred and two parking spots plus six handicap at Minos- at Montessori. Then you go up the hills to West Middle School Athletic Parking. There's an additional seventy-five spaces. I mean, we've got a ton of parking already. It's a matter of changing human behavior or incentivizing human behavior, encouraging human behavior and I. I under, I think so communication from the district to teachers, sta- all staff, parents, et cetera is key. The other thing is there is a, there's, you know, parents can choose to park, walk their kid in, or they can drive, you know, the car line. You know, I hear mixed things from Pop- Montessori parents about what is their custom, what is their preference, right? Some say, well, lower elementary, they the parents wanna walk them in. Upper L, they don't. And there's middle school Montessori kids. They shouldn't be walked to the door in my opinion. They're a little too old at that point. But anyway, I just think like consistent and clear communication from the district to staff and parents would go a long way. Towards incentivizing parking up at West Middle School, you know, using the car line and dropping off instead of waiting for that parking spot because. The, what's happened is there's that busy, hurried, late-running parent who's like, oh, shoot, I see that car line's long. And I see the parking lot's full. Now I'm just gonna park at Meyer and walk across the street. And to Scott Hardy's point a month ago. Well, if we put in a crosswalk, are we gonna be incentivizing and normalizing that behavior? And I hear you. I I I see that point of view, but I think like our fail-safe is. We gotta put in a crosswalk for safety purposes, cause no matter what the district does to encourage the right behavior, there will be those people who no matter what. Will choose, choose to park across Frankie Road and I think that's what you have advocated for. I look at safer out to school is dead in the water. I mean, between the executive order that came out in January. The latest appropriations bill, I mean, the money for the bipartisan infrastructure law is rescinded. If it hasn't been allocated, it's gone. And I I mean, maybe there'll be a conference report that resolves that at the federal level, but let's not count on that. So if what you're looking for is a hundred and ten thousand dollars for a crosswalk. Say we engage our community partners and and do that piece.
And and you know, um, I I did wanna remind, uh, it did remind me, I did ask Trune for legal opinion on liability from there. And they and they felt if the, you know, the road commission's gonna have to agree to whatever you do, signage, all those kind of things, all that. So if that's something the board wanted to do, that would be the first step is having to get with them and get approval. Again, Meyer would have to agree on their side, all those kind of things if you wanted to do that. But um they felt like if you had all those things in place and signed off, that you would not have any extended liability to normal. I did ask for a written. Um, answer on that. I have not received it. I know he's been swamped, but he did promise me and get it to me as soon as he can. I called him again three days ago. And was told that, but that was initial response he gave me to that question, cause I know the board had asked that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I I I'm a long ways from considering Frankie Road and any crossing there as safely to school. I mean, it it may be for parents, it may be for people who have their own volition to decide to use it, but. I I don't know what I'd have to see there for me to endorse kids crossing Frankie Road at this point and endorsing it as a safe route to school.
Which um, I think we should, I shared that with you too. I don't think we'd ever use those words unless it was the name of the grant. If like the name of the grant's gone away, then we can.
Yeah, it's wrong.
Change it to something else.
Crosswalk, convenience, crosswalk.
And and I think again, you know, to kind of that point, our existing liability from that standpoint is also not, you know, again, from a legal opinion, you know, but.
I don't want a kid getting hit there.
I understand.
And I don't endorse the thought that maybe they, it's safe, eh, cause it's, well.
But if you don't install a crosswalk and they choose to walk it, we can't say we've done everything we could to make it safe.
Well, you could have built a wall.
Well, it's a, it's a split. I I get crosswalked into, then you're encouraging.
I I see both sides.
I mean, I mean, you could, you could verbalize. I mean, we've talked a little bit about that, about even a letter to parents, you know, the knowledge, you know, that that we don't recommend it, that is a possibility too, so.
Right. Right. Right.
Just giving you both sides of this, so, you know.
And and the staff have agreed to park up at West Middle School.
Well, I I I don't, I wouldn't say that's true. I think that that's something that we're going to have to enforce if the board gives that clear direction.
No.
I I, you know, when I came into the job, I came kind of, you know, late stream into all the decisions on Montessori. But that's why I did go see Jim Pavelka to kind of get a straight kind of thought. And he had said that, he told me, you know, he he made the decision and the plans were that they would have to park up there. So. I do think, you know, if if that's the direction here of if the board, you know, with all this, again, I agree with Josie on very upfront, clear communication and probably right away, I'm gonna have to go over the building. You know, be with Tracy, talk about what communication we give to parents, what do we give to staff, all that element, I don't know where all this is, but collectively, I just wanna know. You know, from the board of, you know, is there plans of a different route future or that, or, you know, not one that we don't plan on putting any kind of crossing and that this is the process? That's what this conversation's about to give direction. And then also about with that, what are alternatives to think about of biking and walking and our policies for that? To Ty's point that I think we need to visit.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm a little frustrated. I mean, this is the third time and I feel like we're going around in circles. Um, so I guess I, and there's really nothing in the packet for me to look at or consider, so I I guess I'd like you to recommend what your rec- what your administration's recommending.
Yeah.
You know, I think this is a symptom of a a systematic problem, including where we build schools and how we plan for schools and how we talk about kids and staff arriving and leaving our schools. So I I wanna fix the problem. Um, I wanna keep our kids and families and staff safe. Um, but in in inductions with that, I'd like to look at the systems that got us to this place in in the beginning.
Yeah.
Um, because I think there's lessons learned, including for central grade school. Um, so I guess I would like to table this and ask you to bring something back that you would recommend, administration would recommend, and then we can chew on something.
I think at this point, you know, I I struggle with using general funds for those kind of things and that, and I think that we've got some clear, you know, conversations I have had with Chandra.
I do too.
With the TCA of of support from that would not, you know, so I think at this point, at least for now. The clear direction and thoughts of talking about parking up at West Middle School, making sure we're maintaining that trail, salting it in the wintertime, doing all those things. I think going back to our policies and looking what's there and are there ways, I think working with the road commission to talk about a sidewalk. All the way along Silver Road, possibly Silver Lake or uh Frankie Road to all the way from Silver Lake to almost to um to our bus lane that goes up to the Buffalo Trail.
Yeah.
Think advocating with some of our, I know we have a county commissioner that's interested in this conversation that's emailed the board. I think that's all a piece of what we do first. See where that takes us and then go from there. That'd be my opinion right now, if you're looking.
Just to be clear, though.
Especially when you're looking to grow your student population in that school. Address it now.
Point?
Do you mind if I?
No, please.
Um, I did also, at the very early stages of Montessori, we did ask for enhancements and improvements to the actual crosswalk that exists on uh Silver Lake Road, which is not very visible. Um, I think they noted those for when they actually do construction. Um, there's not a yellow sign that indicates it's a crossroad, crosswalk. There's no pushed-out curbs to provide that. Really known somebody standing there. There's not even lines anymore. Um, so the existing crossroad, I think, needs some enhancements, so I would definitely encourage those when they do Frankie Road. But also, Josie hit the nail on the head. It's human behavior. It doesn't matter if we have five hundred parking spots. If it's not right in front of the door at the time that they want it, they may or might not use it. I. I believe there's empty spots there when we do dismissal and arrival. They refuse to use it and and I don't know how much more you can plan for human behavior as it changes. I mean, we, we are now using uh West Middle School for their car line, all of the front, which is pretty well stacked. Now we're using the bus pickup as well and we still have people. Letting kids cross in front of traffic to get to the school. We don't encourage that. We clearly have identified what's to be done. I I don't know how much more you can do on the human behavior side. I mean, we have people out there monitoring that are getting flipped off and swore at. I I just wanna make sure the re- there is no school that has an excellent car line or parking situation. Doesn't matter how much worry you put in.
It has at least improved at West Middle School last year. Kristen Studeman did a really good job this last year.
And I just make, I don't think we really want perfect car line and parking at every school. I mean, that, I hope that's not the goal of of the district. You know, there's many other ways for kids and families to get to school.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent.
Um, and I think that the human behavior, and remember the district did this back in twenty twenty-one when I was helped leading these efforts with the city, that there are. Evidence-based best practice ways to change behavior to talk about how we message park and stroll locations, right? I am also not comfortable making a park and stroll location for Meyer parking lot. Unless there's like a sheriff there, right, and a hawk signal. And so.
So I think at this point, you know, what I I think from the board's standpoint is we will begin to look at policies. In that element and bringing that, you know, to the board as far as some of those and Ty, I'm interested in your help and kind of some of your thoughts on that and fleshing that out for me. Of what that looks like and then as well as your experience with some of the biking and and walking and some of the stuff you did with the city. That's something I really don't have an expertise on our team from that I think you can help us a lot with. And then I'd also invite a couple of board members to meet with me with. The road commission and others as Frankie Road and that's being done, to try and set some meetings up to further talk about. Improvements as that road's being done and crossings and some of those things of what's right for bikes and walkers to be able to do. So, you know, that's something that I I don't have an expertise in that I could really use some help.
And the point would be a good communication when school begins with.
Yeah. Yeah, and 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 Dan and, you know, we'll work with Tracy, you know, and that on a lot of that and and get in front of that here over the next month. And again, with some input in the policies and things, we'll, we'll begin to take a look at those right away here, maybe even begin to start that work here in August to see what we can.
We have a staff meeting. If one of you can represent a staff meeting.
Yeah, happy to do that, yep, yep.
And put in the the, you know, weekly newsletter.
Yep. Yep.
Um, just a point of clarification. Can bond funds be used for a crosswalk?
No, cause it's not our property.
It's not our property.
Okay, okay.
Roads not. The side of the tar as we could.
You all had gotten a, you had gotten a cost estimate, right, of a hundred five thousand, a hundred ten thousand, right?
Hundred and six, yeah.
So that would come out of our general fund. One thing I I did learn is that. If we were to install one and then the road commission came in and repaved Frankie Road, they would have to re. Reinstall that crosswalk. So you, our work would not be done in vain. And I'm personally worried that they're gonna delay repaving Frankie Road, cause it's been, that's. That can's been kicked down the road a few times, so, you know, I mean, to me, that's a hundred, five hundred, ten thousand dollars is not a lot to spend on a safety issue like this. But the the, you know, in conjunction with the communications, but I will wait for your official uh recommendation on that front.
I I'm making it now.
On that?
Yeah.
On this, on the crosswalk?
Yeah, I think that we need to do the first parts in that element and, you know, um, until we get there and and, you know, I'll continue. I think I think we, next, let's have the conversation with road commission. All those folks and see what. And and, you know, I'll continue, I think, I think we, next, let's have the conversation with road commission, all those folks and see what they're, if they really feel that strong about it. I think we can bring that back to the board, but until like they they feel like that was the part that Trune was really, really heavy on. Like, you need the road commission to say this is the right thing to do before you do it from that, you know, from that element. That's where your coverage is from, if you did it, from a liability standpoint.
Yeah.
And that's part of the process with building, you have to get there, they have to sign off on it.
Yeah. And that was, was that in our board packet a month or two ago, the hundred and five or hundred and ten thousand cross estimate?
Um, I don't think it was in the packet, it was just a verbal.
It was in discussion.
Okay.
Yep.
Update, okay.
Yep.
So I mean.
I'll work on my human behavior side.
Yeah.
Because BF Skinner's never.
There you go.
And I'll take care of that side.
Yeah, the pigeon and the.
Right.
I think, you know, I think that if you were to put across, I just think there's a lot of conversation, a lot of people buy in that has to happen. And I think that the road commission is the first one, and if they really feel that's the right thing to do, I would bring that back to the board. But I, you know, and and I would actually request I have a couple of board members with me to meet with the road commission to have that conversation.
Enforcing that.
Well, I think we're let, I think you should do that. Feel free to pick two less important ones to appoint people, I would say.
Any volunteers really wanna be a part of that?
I'm happy to be.
Josie?
I'm happy to.
You good?
Yep.
I'll set that up here sometime, try to get it in, probably August, you know, to be able to do that, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
Um, alright, um, moving on to board policy. Uh, well, let's start with, uh, actually, I'm just gonna defer to Doc by way of.
And I will pass it right over to Connie Taylor.
Alright, we had brought a few of them to Board Exec and um it had been asked to put them on for discussion, and I think one was also added for discussion tonight. Um, one of them was uh around reimbursement for meals. Um, in terms of, right now, currently, as relates to board members, there is a limitation of meals of ninety dollars per day. Um, for attendance at conferences. Um, and so the conversation was, is that sufficient based on the different venues that we may have, not only in the state of Michigan, but also if people were to go to national conferences? During our conversation um in Board Exec Committee, we did share with what we currently have on our administrative guidelines and via memo that's sent out to staff. Currently, any of the staff members who go to a conference in the state of Michigan were limited to thirty eight dollars per day, I'm sorry, thirty nine dollars per day. And then if it's out of state, particular states that are a little bit more expensive, like your Chicago, Illinois, some Florida, California, New York. That amount goes to seventy eight dollars per day. Um, and President Newman Bale had asked me to also look at the state guidelines for what the state provides for state employees. So this is obviously a conversation for the board to have as to whether or not you wanna modify board policy to adjust those amounts. But I just wanted to give you the information of what is applicable to state employees, TCAP's employees and the board for your reference and discussion.
And I did, yeah, I I do believe that there will be. A decent output provision of these numbers based off of uh semi-fires that I did make. Not a, not a doubling or anything, but like a pretty double-digit increase on these numbers in this next.
Based on the state numbers?
Based on the state, because it's adjusted for inflation and particular things, so that likely this is gonna be a little higher, um, October one, um.
Yeah, these are for the, this current fiscal year, which obviously for the state changes on October one. But right now, if you look at certain select cities in Michigan, it's approximately forty two dollars a day, roughly, give or take. A dollar for for food, whereas ours is currently thirty nine dollars for select wealth for all of Michigan. So we're pretty much in line without a mission. The state goes a little bit further in terms of out-of-state cities. They outline very specifically in what cities in those particular states, there's a higher amount allocated. Um, so it would like, for example, our current is all of Florida, whereas if you look at the states, it identifies certain cities in Florida. So we we don't go that deep into the details with our policy, and then of course, the board's is just ninety dollars per day, regardless of you're in state or out of state.
I'm happy to to open this up, because the the issue is not the staff reimbursement rates, but the board's reimbursement and travel expenses. Um, policy number two through zero five. This came up because in May, Trustee Schmidt and I went to the MASP Spring Institute in my, on Mackinac Island. And by the time we, I made my early reg- registration. And booked lodging, the conference rate was already gone. And so the housing allowance was insufficient. Um, for what we could get, and this was Mackinac Island and. So it's, it was before peak season, I mean, it goes up fifty percent in peak. And then for meals, I mean, I only had one dinner, it was not covered by MASP. I had an appetizer, a salad and a lemonade, and it was almost at our limit for meals, for a daily rate of ninety dollars. That's how expensive that location was. So, you know, I asked for us to review this, because I was thinking, you know, we don't have any flexibility. It's, these are just flat rates in our policy. You know, we all know that if you go to a major city or even a place like Mackinac Island, um, that the cost can be significantly higher. So, you you know, there are various options we could look at. One thing I thought was, do we wanna add a provision for asking the full board for an exception? For the the BOE president, like we do, you know, with certain other policies. Well, in in certain policies, we ask the 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 superintendent. The odd thing is, we have, we have policies where an exception can be granted by the superintendent or his, her, designated. But in this case, because it's the board, we can't ask the superintendent, he's our employee, right? But so we have to ask each other or the board president.
Yep.
So those were some options I thought of, and I really appreciate you guys did look at the the uh state reimbursement rates. I can tell you, they are significantly lower than the federal. I'm used to federal reimbursement rates, so, um.
And my 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 idea there wasn't necessarily lower it, but my, um. It was to take the fact, we've had this discussion multiple times, like, over the years. And I I have been asked to develop the policy and change it and talk about it continuously, that if we could just match up with. Now, I don't know, I didn't know the federal ones, maybe that's an option too, so like, um. But I think it would be appropriate to match our federal or to a policy that we don't have to manage, that is published, like the mileage rate is just updated. And so that would be, that's what I was trying to do.
Yeah.
In this request.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I also feel like we don't have a lot of uh staff traveling for things, and that probably should be the same for staff as it should be for the board. But that's a separate discussion, but either way, I think it should be. Take a, take away the work from us and put it onto someone else, that's already doing it.
So what are we, are we making a recommendation of something?
No, this is purely for board discussion. I think, I think, I think Josie was okay with the amount, she wanted an exception process. Um, I'm okay with the amount, I, but I'm also open to whatever the board. I thought this would help, it it made the things a little bit more confusing. I don't necessarily know if it's a problem, but more confusing.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed, it seems generous on its face, two hundred fifty for housing per day and ninety dollars for meals. I'm just telling you, that was my experience, you know, just two months ago in our own state. Um, and I hate for board members who are all doing this work pro bono, to put it to their own pockets to supplement their travel. Or staff for that matter, but anyway, you know, this is the board policy I was looking at.
But then maybe what we need to do is tell MASP, they should not pick the most expensive place in the state to hold a meeting. Cause I think that was probably. Not a wise decision, uh, when you're facing cutbacks from federal and state funding.
Yeah, that's probably not the easiest place for.
No.
Accompanions.
Mackinac is one of the most expensive, if not the most expensive places.
Yeah.
To go.
Right, right.
So I do think, and I, and I'm sure it's not gonna come around, so I'm okay with whatever the board decides. If anything, I would just like to tie it to something, so we don't have to, we just say it's done by this and every year it comes out, we follow it, but.
Mm-hmm.
We can leave it the same, I'm okay with whatever.
If we have a trip coming up, I mean, usually we we have our travel planned in advance. Would folks feel comfortable with a provision for an exception to be granted in advance by the full board or the board president?
I would just put it by the, I would literally put it by the finance committee, and it doesn't have to be.
It's fair.
No, but it's not, I'd actually say that, but like, it's.
Scott Hurdy doesn't wanna make that call.
No, I don't mind making it, but then it's gotta go to the full board then, it's unfair.
It does, no, if the policy says the finance committee just.
Yeah, you could do that.
Move it to consent.
It doesn't even have to go to consent, you can.
It doesn't have to go to the board, like, you could put anything that the finance committee can be of.
You could, you kind of, well, then grant us approval, approve or disapprove and.
Yeah, on an exception basis.
Yeah, to give you a kind of example of this, so um intermediate school districts by law, their board members have to bring to the full board any trip that they take. And it has to be approved by the full board, including the superintendent of an ISD. There was a a massive um uh fraud that was conducted in open schools, probably about twenty years ago. And because of that, they put that in place. Um, so there is a, there is a process for that, which you could delegate essentially to the finance committee to do that same thing from that standpoint.
After the, after the travel's been completed or in advance?
Before. That's that's state law for ISDs.
So I could add, you know, and bring back next month for a revised policy, something to the effect, and I hope Ward Smith it better. But any exceptions to the amounts, you know, noted here, maybe approved in advance of the travel by the board finance committee. Alright, I will make that revision, there's nothing you need to do tonight, I will make that revision, bring it back for you to review. We're gonna have some additional policy revisions, and if that gets through committee and that's what everybody's looking at, we can just put it on consent for next time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one, it is new but not new, um, the social media policy for all of you. Um, while it's new under Trune, Trune did not have a policy that reflected this information. So it was at the request of the Communications Department, previous under Niola, for more than ten years. That they were using this policy, which we just copied over verbatim um to the Trune policy, given a new number to align with where the social media is. Um, and it essentially gives the board some um discretion or the Communications Department, the D S A D. To to monitor comments that are considered to be inappropriate, not protected otherwise by First Amendment free speech rights. And so we brought that over, there was some question, you know, to bring it up for discussion. I will tell you, if you look at the policy as we presented it, when I talk to communications, really what they're saying is, you know what? If people are a little, you know, concerned about some of these other pieces down here, and I think President Newman Bale was asking the question about, you know, do we really attempt? To go in and and, and if there's misinformation, correct it, are we really doing that? I think there's the ability to do that, it's just that I don't know that we are. The biggest concern is for them to be able to go in and remove posts um that are inappropriate. A lot of times, people using curse words, making negative comments about student pictures that are, you know, inappropriate, derogatory. They they like to go in to be able to remove those. So the big ask is on this policy, is everything up to E? But just keeping in mind that everything below E we had for ten years. But it's up to the board, we're in the place where we're revising or adopting the new Trune policy to do whatever is the board's preference.
And I can remember there was a specific question, was it? One board member had a specific question about some First Amendment.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Connie did answer, just my question, because there are no citations to statutory or regulatory requirements. I asked whether this is an optional policy, because there aren't legal requirements, and she said it is actually, it's optional slash discretionary.
Yes, the question.
No legal requirement for us to have it.
But they have utilized this policy in the past as a basis.
And to be clear, really, now our communications falls under our curriculum instruction department?
Correct.
So there, if 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 there's any reference specifically, you know, you might wanna just take, you know, communications or something like that in that department.
I'm sorry, yes. Yeah. Yeah, because Jessie was the one that actually brought the policy to me and that Megan said, hey, we don't have this under Trune. And we really could use this, and then, you know, specifically, I think her notes are, this is what we really need.
Okay, well, to that point, um, my concern with this policy is that it is under the section called Employee Conduct and Ethics. So eh, to me, this should be a public-facing policy, rather than being directed at employees. It, when I first read it, it just, I didn't know what, you know, the intent is, it it seems unnecessary. And and potentially punitive to employees, it's like it's targeting employees' use of social media. But really, I think what we're getting at is TCAP's wants to be able to monitor comments on its social media. And, you know, TCAP's remain, retains the right to remove them, to respond to them, et cetera. I would just advocate that we take this out of section forty two hundred, Employee Conduct and Ethics. Take out the first two paragraphs, which are directed at TCAP's employees. And just start the whole policy with, you know, comments are reviewed according to our comment policy and everything from there down, I'm fine with.
We we absolutely do that. It was only aligned with forty two seventeen, because that's the only other policy that references social media. And it's, you know, it's a policy regarding employee use of social media, and then this was a tag on to talk about. But we can certainly move it to renumber it and take it out. I'm not sure that the first, if you take out the employee conduct and ethics, the first two paragraphs are still applicable, but it's totally up to the board.
Why don't, why don't at this point, we just send it back to you to revisit?
I can bring it back.
Make a recommendation of where it could go.
I can absolutely do that. I'll bring a book back to exec committee.
Cause I still don't like hate speech.
Well, that's constitutional, I don't get to change that.
But if the whole policy is not required, whether it's constitutional or not, it doesn't have to be there.
So I explained in Board Exec, like, one of the terminologies that you use under the First Amendment of speeches not protected. The courts have said hate speech is not protected. And I know that, um, I remember Hack had concerns about that interpretation, but everything is subject to interpretation. Obscenity is a subject of interpretation, what does that look like? I mean, back in the day, back in the day though, remember, you couldn't even say that somebody was pregnant on television. And now if you watch, you know, even network television, it's substantially different, because that that's changed over time. And so and hate speech has changed over time, you know, in terms of what people constitute and don't. And so we know it when we see it, but that's just one of, it's a common phraseology that they use to to indicate what is not protected speech.
Just for the sake of efficiency, I think that's all okay. If you have any questions, it can go to Connie and go back.
I'll bring it back to you.
Connie, I just wanna ask two things, the the, towards the bottom, that copyrighted and other proprietary material. Would that, would like posting an article when somebody says like, hey, look at this New York Times article, is that considered copyrighted material?
Well, I'm not a copyright lawyer by any stretch of the imagination. But, I mean, there are certain things, if they're public facing, that you can put out there, there are things you can use in brevity. If it's somebody that's tagging it on to one of ours and we know that it's a copyrighted material, we would try to remove it.
Okay.
But there's so many different with social media.
As long as the employee conduct is taken out of this, I mean, it's okay to keep it, I just didn't want this to be held against the staff members. People is like, oh, look at this great article, and it's copyrighted and it's held against them, you know, yeah.
Okay.
And and the other thing I don't like is the irrevocable permission to copy.
I, again, I think at this point, I think at this point, the board's saying, just take it back.
Yeah.
All members.
Also, I'll work with with Jessie and her department, what do we feel like we need that we utilize that would not be misleading for for folks? I hate to have stuff in here that we don't enforce as well, because then people have the expectation that we are enforcing.
And that was to my point of the one line, which is fine, you you pointed out the classification, I agree, I just wanted to line up.
And our folks have said, if we could just stop it, that this is the stuff that we need to remove, that we are currently removing when we see it. I'll bring that back as a recommendation and the board can make any modifications.
Thank you.
Alright, and then you wanted to pull Bullard Blacky.
Um. Five three oh seven homeless students.
Oh, yeah, the homeless one, it is.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Let me get to the thing, so much has gone on. Um, it's in my.
I think your point, I believe your point was a question on uh transportation.
The 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 point was two-fold. One is that it sounds like in the case of a homeless child. Wants to go to school, they will be enrolled immediately. And then we go look to see what the evidence is of their immunizations. That is the only student that we do that for.
Well, that's what, in the context of this, right, we we do allow students to enroll without immunization records. But they have a certain time period to get it, but it cannot, so what Bullard Blacky is saying is that we are gonna remove barriers. They're saying kids who don't have, they're defined as homeless as defined by this policy, they just need to be in school. And we're gonna figure out the rest of it later on. They, we may ne- never get immunization records from them, we may never get a birth certificate, we may never, but it can't be the reason that we deny them enrollment. Now, when we're working with other parents, when we're trying to get immunization records from other schools, so on and so forth, the parents can, they can, we can enroll them. But the parents have a certain period of time in which to provide them to us, or. But the parents have a certain period of time in which to provide them to us or to get an exception, religious exemption, medical exemption. I mean, then additional rules per your, per your board policy apply. But really what it's saying here is that if there's a question about residency, other non-homeless students, we can deny them enrollment till we get that worked out. For homeless students, if there's a question about residency, we gotta enroll them and then we'll go through the process on determining whether or not residency. Is applicable or whether or not they still have rights to to constitute us as their district.
I just think you'd feel really bad if you ended up with measles epidemic going through your school. Or, uh, mumps epidemic going through your school, especially if it's high school level, because.
I don't, don't disagree with you, with it, Bullard Pelacki is one of those laws that that's, you know, that's all statutory.
So I, I just, I think that that is actually not looking out for your overall population.
We could take it up the feds.
I, I should, I should.
But as, as Dr. Ben Wagner indicated, Bullard Pelacki is one of those things that's, um, potentially on the chopping block.
That's wrong. Well, not bad, and then the other problem that I had with that, and I told you that one, and that is. That if you have a student who wants school of choice. And the school of choice is one that we say, you actually are pretty much maximum on enrollment to staff ratios. So we're not accepting other students coming in. Except, you know, if they live in that area. It means that if somebody has a sibling at school of choice and going to that school. And they have a younger one, that kid could be denied, but the homeless kid would not be denied. It seems to me that it should be subject to the same consideration.
Well, ultimately, I mean, the way, if, if they're not just picking our school, oftentimes what they're saying is that this was my school of residence. And I've now been displaced and I no longer live there, and they still have a right to their origin school.
But, and it says that in one place, it talks to the school of origin, but in section, I think it's J or something, it does not.
So what happened?
That is practice that what we, what first said, that is practice, that if a kid originally lived in that area and was, you know, homeless. They have the right to do that, and we have to provide transportation from wherever they are to that.
I understand, I understand.
Ever been, I've never seen it the reverse.
Me neither.
Always.
Which is the intent, the intent is, like, we, we've had it a couple of times, even inter-district. We had some homeless kids that, you know, were in the pines living, and they were able to get into the Goodwill Inn. And so they were, but they started at Willow Hill, we're transporting them from the Goodwill Inn to Willow Hill to keep them in their good school environment. To keep consistently with that child.
But that is school of origin, not school of choice.
But if they've school of choice in, and then they, and they have it, they have rights to that school.
Once we take them, they're ours in school of choice, and then they subsequently become homeless, it's still their school of origin.
But it's, it's, I guess I'm saying school of origin, I understand, school of choice to me is more a selection.
So we're not taking these kids back into whatever school they wanna come back, they have to prove that it's their school of origin.
That's.
We may be debating with them whether or not it's their school of origin, but what this is saying is we have to enroll them, and then we go through this new resolution process.
Because they're saying that living there.
And if it wasn't their school of origin, then they're not entitled to stay there.
Okay, yeah, it's that J, and I was thinking, why don't we just say school of origin as opposed to school of choice?
There might be something there, let us look at that, I mean, with school of choice rules, and we have an inter-local agreement, so there, there's some one oh five, one oh five C things there. Like, we were just debating, like, if a kid, you know, like, if they're declaring their homeless area to be within that zone. You know, by school of choicing, then I think we do. Now, if they came in and said, I live over here, but I wanna go to school here, I'm homeless, I don't think so, but.
Correct.
Let us get some clarification on that for sure, I think it's right as it's written, but let us double check.
Okay, so we're good to just delay that, or push that one to the next meeting as well and get that clarification?
I think we're right, but if not, we'll fix it.
Okay, so, uh, we don't have any motions or anything to cover, because we've pushed everything down the road till now, so we'll talk about it.
Well, we said everything we could.
Oh, yeah, you're good, it's fine. Um, moving through to, uh, item F, uh, student parent handbook, yeah, that.
Oh, that one is just, I wanted to make the point. If the handbook is so long that even staff don't take time to read it, maybe the handbook is too long. And maybe there could be some way we can shorten it somewhat, even refer to people. To certain areas for further information online, but shorten it so maybe more of it gets read.
Every year we have a, every year we have a team that looks at that, elementary and secondary, we'll bring it up, see if they can come up with any briefness.
I think if you give everyone a one pager, they're not gonna read it, so.
That's, that's what we do at secondary.
Let's go back to the behavior question.
It's a, mm-hmm.
Secondary's get a one pager that we go through all the classrooms. We don't go, when we cover the handbook, every classroom in secondary covers a handbook with the kids. And it's a one pager and we highlight, obviously, the areas that that we see on a regular basis that may be an issue.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's what you really need to.
That's me. You know, otherwise, it's just overwhelming and you just shut it down, closes it off.
And the board will, uh, adopt the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six elementary and secondary student and parent handbooks.
Second.
Alright, any other discussion? Uh, I mean, please conduct a roll call, but.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Ballinger?
Yes. Um, trustee Cardy?
Aye.
Trustee Moon Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
President Newman?
Yes, motion carries. Uh, moving on to the second public comment. Nope, um, no, uh, public comment, um, what's that?
Yeah, thank you for hanging in there.
And I will like, uh, I applaud President Pleasant Marks, we have been here long enough and, uh, I don't have any, I want to thank everyone for some difficult topics and more discussion in the future. Uh, the next Board of Education meeting is a study session on Monday, August eleventh at five P M, it is, uh, in this, uh, building. Um, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Aye, second.
Second.
Erica's second, all those in the papers say aye.
Aye.
All those probably say nay. Meeting adjourned, official.